Good evening, everyone. We will call the special city council meeting to order for Wednesday, July 30, 2014. The time is now 5:30 PM. This is a special city council meeting for the purpose of holding a budget hearing for the 2015 budget. First order of business is the roll call.
Scott.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Estes.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wifin-Buck.
Here.
Laurenti.
Here.
We have Quorm.
Thank you. We will now recognize Pastor Wilbur Holtz from Trinity Lutheran Church, who will give the invocation. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Pray. There we go. The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Father, we give you thanks for these servants of our city, and we pray that you would be with them tonight as the discussion of how to use the dollars that have been entrusted happens. And we pray for your guidance, that they might continue to bless the city and all who live here, all who come here to visit. Thank you for watching, for keeping. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. We will call the special city council meeting to order for Wednesday, July thirty, two thousand and fourteen. The time is now five thirty P. M. This is a special city council meeting for the purpose of holding a budget hearing for the two thousand and fifteen budget. First order of business is the roll call.
Scott.
Drew.
Louis.
Doyle.
Wright.
Estes.
Nordstrom.
Roberts.
Wifin Buck.
Laurenti.
We have Quorm.
Thank you. We'll now recognize Pastor Wilbur Holtz from Trinity Lutheran Church, who will give the invocation. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Pray. Ah, there we go. The Lord be with you. Let us pray. Father, we give you thanks for these servants of our city, and we pray that you would be with them tonight as the discussion of how to use the dollars that have been entrusted happens. And we pray for your guidance, that they might continue to bless the city and all who live here, all who come here to visit. Thank you for watching, for keeping. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Holtz. And before I turn the gavel over to our city council vice president, President Brad Estes, I want to just go over a couple of things. First of all, this is the second of three formal budget hearings, and in addition to the three formal budget hearings, which the first was held last night, July twenty eight, I'm sorry, Monday night, July twenty eight, and now tonight, July thirty, and then we have another one coming up on Monday, August eleventh, at five thirty P. M., and we have two legal and finance meetings and two council meetings. So in all, there will be seven formal hearings of the budget, and these, the three hearings that were in the process of now, this is the second of the third of the in-depth budget hearings. So tonight on our radar screen, we have airport, police, fire and emergency services, parks and rec, public works, mayor council, and discussion and direction. And I will now turn the gavel over to our city council vice president, Brad Estes. Our council president, Jerry Wright, is not with us this evening, although he is watching from his location, and I will now turn the gavel over to our council vice president, and I will remain present in the meeting to answer any questions as needed. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Quaker. As we call the airport representatives up to the podium to start, prepare for their presentation, while they're getting ready, I guess I would have a, I would have a question for the council as to how things, if they want to see anything changed. All things went Monday night, everything go well, everybody point of order, everybody have satisfied with their ability to talk and ask questions. Ron, were you keying in?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I appreciate, everything went real well. I think we could just take an opportunity to maybe tell some of the people to be prepared, because it seemed to went a little bit faster, so we, you know, some of the people were waiting for other people to come, and so because we've scheduled you for a timed spot, we may go a little bit quicker than that in some arenas. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment, and one of the advantages tonight, the first night had thirty minutes for us to talk about the rules of the game, and tonight, the airport's plugged right in at five thirty, so if, oh, Pauline Sumption.
Thank you. Before we get started, I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, we talked about this a little bit this morning at our director meeting about being early and making sure you're here early, because we have been running ahead of schedule, so hopefully, everybody will follow that tonight. The other thing that we talked about a little bit was the questions that were posed by Mr. Laurenti. I had sent out an email Monday night to those department directors that hadn't presented to that time with those three questions, and the conversation amongst us, and what I pointed out there was, in the seven and a half years that I've been here and all the budget seasons I've been through with the city, this is quite honestly the most flexible budget that we have seen as far as the direction that was given. I kind of explained to you Monday night on how we, the guidelines that we gave them this year, but honestly, I don't think any specific item was cut. Like I explained during my presentation, mine just got shifted from the general fund to a different fund than Terry Waldestorff in Public Works, instead of a cash outright purchase, it went to a loan purchase, and so I think a better question that could have been posed, and maybe, or should be posed, is if we had additional revenues, what were three additional things that you would like to see in your budget? Because honestly, we all gave very realistic budgets for what we needed, and so if they didn't put it in their budget as far as they needed it, but they didn't get it, that's on them, quite honestly, and I think we did a very good job with that flexibility given to give you the realistic budget and have the stuff in there that we truly needed. So I just wanted to.
Thank you, Pauline. With us tonight, representing the airport board, is Mr. Peter Gertz. Pete, we'll turn it over to you. Thanks.
Thank you, council members. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Again, I just want to introduce myself. I am Pete Gertz, and I am interim airport director for the Rapsie Regional Airport. Along with me today, that's going to help out with the presentation, is Tony Broome, who is the deputy director for airport finance and administration, and also I have Mr. Ray Carpenter, who is here from the airport board as the board president, so. Where, where does it go? Any batteries? Thank you, sir. So let's begin. So the airport is governed by a five-member board, appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council for three-year terms. The airport is a self-funded enterprise, counts receiving its operating revenue from rates and charges paid by the airport tenants. So once again, a self-revenue, self-funded enterprise. Capital improvements are funded through the federal airport improvement program. Once again, we get about ninety percent of our federal improvements through the FAA. The state provides about five percent, and then the airport makes up the difference of the other five percent that goes with it. The airport employs thirty full-time employees, including those seven full-time firefighters. The airport pays about a hundred and five thousand dollars to interdepartmental charges as well. One of the great successes that we're having at the airport, we continue to grow and grow and grow. We've added a new destination this year. We've added Atlanta. It is now a weekly flight going out on Saturdays. They've already briefed us that over the holiday season, they're going to be doing a daily flight going out. One of the things that we've been working on as well is we're trying to work that even further into a daily, year-round type of a thing, so we've been working a grant with those as well. So again, great flights, like I said, nine destinations, and they continue to grow with everything else that goes on with it. Another great positive success story happening at the airport, you know, for a while, we were kind of stable as going on. This year is looking as another banner year. We're earning at about eight percent at this time, as high as the number of employments go, so we continue to grow. So these are all actuals, employments for, and deployments for up to two thousand and thirteen, but again, two thousand and fourteen, first quarter, second quarter, we're showing about an eight percent increase overall. So again, we're improving, great success with that. Again, the overall thing with the airport, you know, we pride ourselves in taking the career of a great field that's full of safety and full of security and that kind of deal, so over the last, oh, six years, we've had perfect scores with our FAA. They come in for about two, three days, they scour our records, they scour our whole programs that go through it, and they look at us very intensely, and over those last six years, we've come back with zero discrepancies, zero deficiencies goes with it. In fact, they recognized this in two thousand and eleven as having a safety ward, which is a highly coveted ward. They just don't give that out to anybody, and so very proud of that and very, very happy with it. Again, our training program is one of the more elite programs out there. We have a very robust training program, and again, that's been recognized over the past four years by our AAAE organization as excellence in training awards. That's a great thing for us. Another thing that goes on at the airport, you know, they see us kind of growing, so they look at us as far as putting different things into it. We now do have the advanced imaging technology, which is kind of a density check thing that they do in here. There's no more really X-rays that they bombard you, no more stick figures, none of those kind of things that goes on. So it's the latest, greatest that the TSA uses as far as advanced imaging technology. The airport offers TSA pre-checks, which expedite screening that's on board as well. The airport also offers mobile boarding pass technology. And another thing that the airport has recently done, we are first selected in the area to receive the ADS-B antenna, and this is more of a safety thing. This keeps the traffic airways safe as far as avoidance detection with aircrafts through navigation and communication. So again, FAA, TSA, they recognize our airport as being a success, and so they're the ones putting these things into our airports. They see that going on with it. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tony Broome, who's going to talk about the operating specifics about the airport budget.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing us this opportunity. As you can see on the above slide, the two thousand and fourteen operating budget, this is not our capital budget, this is just the operations and maintenance of the airport. We had a four-point-five-million-dollar budget in two thousand and fourteen, and two thousand and fifteen, we're at about four-point-five-five-five-one-three-oh. This shows our budget over, let's see, since two thousand and twelve, actuals, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen budget, two thousand and fifteen budget. Our airport typically runs on about a four-million-dollar-a-year operating budget. What you can see is a substantial increase between two thousand and thirteen and two thousand and fourteen, because we built the QTA facility, which is the quick turnaround for the car rental company. That building was paid for through a bond endeavor, paid back by CFCs, which is a customer facility charge on a car rental. So that's how that bond is being paid back. The airport actually owns and operates and maintains that building for the use of the car rental companies. That's really typical at airports today to have that type of facility for those companies. They're a substantial part of our operating revenue, so you'll see that jump there, but other than that, we are still pretty much right on task with where we've been. As far as our capital plan goes, this is considerably less than other years, and that's mainly because, of course, two years ago, we finished the major twenty-million-dollar expansion on the terminals. So for our two thousand and fifteen capital plan, which is again ninety percent funded by the FAA through the airport improvement program grants, we will complete the old terminal demolition. That project, hopefully, that terminal will, building will be down by the end of this year, and then the remaining ramp paving that's associated with it will actually be completed next year. We will be purchasing some snow removal equipment. We're looking at refurbishing some areas of the commercial tarmac, which is right by the jet bridges. There's some cracking in those areas, very minor, but it's a project that needs to take place, and then some equipment and computer replacements that we'll be doing. And that's all I have as far as our budget goes, but the only difference in our budget, it would say, is this year, we did pay off a bond payment through our TSA building, so that's kind of nice. That gave us a little bit of extra cash flow. We'll be adding custodial staff next year. We are self-funded, as Pete mentioned, so we do have to track our revenues carefully. At this point, we're projecting about a two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand net profit for two thousand and fifteen, so I would stand for any questions as well.
Thank you, Tony and Peter. I'd also like to recognize our, the new airport board president is here, General Carpenter. Welcome. And I get, I also get to serve as the liaison to the airport board, and I really enjoy that opportunity. First question we have from the dais is from Chad Lewis.
Thank you, sir. A quick question for you, and I might have missed it when Charity was talking about something. I see that your budget's gone up for two percent for wages, and did you cover that? Is that part of the Condory study?
I didn't cover that verbally, but that has been updated in this budget.
Does that factor in the current sabbatical that Cameron Humphries is on currently?
He will be on his full salary next year when he returns, so the sabbatical wouldn't impact next year's budget, except maybe January.
Okay, so that's just the two percent, just part of the study that, the information, I wasn't sure if that affected the enterprise funds or not, I couldn't remember. So that's all my question was.
Our funds were impacted by those raises. We had actually allowed for some of that in our budgeting process, but our budget has been updated to reflect those increases.
Okay, thank you very much.
Richie Nordstrom, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, folks. Welcome, and applaud you folks for doing the outstanding job at the airport. It was great to get a tour out there once in a while, and I recommend that more people get that opportunity. I've got a question about flexibility of your equipment out there. During winter storm Atlas, that came in very rudely with the city of Rapsody, do you have any flexibility to offer that equipment to be utilized within the city or even getting to the city?
Yeah, once again, you know, all this equipment is pretty well purchased by the FAA, so we have to be careful about how we use that equipment. I'm sure in emergency situations, there would be accounts where we could go for a reprieve on that, and to where we could actually maybe loan some of that equipment out to it, you know, because we do have some plows, we do have some sanders and those kind of things, but our first and foremost thing is during those situations is make sure the airport is taken care of, and the FAA expects that to happen, so as our equipment is being tied up with that, maybe as it slows down, there could be a possibility for that to happen, under emergency clauses.
Correct, yeah, understand.
If I might add to that, the FAA actually regulates how many pieces of equipment we can buy with those FAA dollars, so they really keep a minimal amount of equipment. So the equipment that we do have is being utilized by the airport in those types of situations, when weather allows our crews to get out on the runway.
And so your equipment status or equipment, equipment age is okay. I mean, we're in good shape on the equipment.
Correct. We plan to purchase some next year. We have in our, we have an equipment replacement plan as well, and everything we do, of course, is governed by the FAA. We had actually intended to purchase some equipment this year, but due to the grant process, they switched some things around on us. So next year, we will most likely be buying two snow haulers, and then the following year, we will probably be buying a high-speed plow.
Thank you. And the last question I've gotten is pretty much for everybody, is your professional development, and what you're describing as travel and in training, can you expound on that line item?
I'd love to. We belong to a great trade organization called the AAAE, which is the American Association of Airport Executives, and through that program, through that trade organization, they offer numerous professional development courses. So at the beginning of every year, we sit down, we do our budgeting process, and we constantly look at who can go, to where classes. They offer everything from electrician schools to airport operations schools to public information schools, as well as all the different conferences that we tend at the national level as well. And so that's one of the things that we all look down, one of the things that we have to judge or balance there is our, our time. Time is commodity, and we can't always be away from the airport going through all these different things. So we pick and choose which ones are the most important. One of the things we look at is if there's any new hires, there's always the introductory classes that they must go through, and so we are constantly looking at that. So, yep, we support it a hundred percent, and we're all in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. Nordstrom. I do not see any other council lights from the dais here. That being said, Peter and Tony, thank you very much for the, for the budget summary.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your support. We really do appreciate that. Everything that happens here does affect us as well, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Next on our, up for budget review is the police department. We have Chief Carl Jaggers. And Chief, is the sheriff and the dispatcher, will they be coming in?
Yes. I have the three division commanders from the police department here with me now, and by six o'clock, Sheriff Tome will be here, as well as Leanne Hollins, head of the director of the dispatch center.
Do you see any problem, schedule-wise, if we let you go ahead and start now?
No, I think that would go over very well, and we might actually have a little more than thirty minutes, so if we get started early, that would be perfect.
All right, thanks. The floor is yours, sir.
Well, again, I'm Carl Jaggers, and it's my privilege to serve as the chief of police for the citizens and visitors of our community and for the members of our department. We've got Captain James Johns, who is the commander of our investigations division, Captain Don Hedrick, who is our support services commander, and Captain Dan Rude, who is our field services commander, otherwise known as our patrol division. So to start off, as you can see, our overall budget has grown by approximately five-point-four percent, and that five-point-four percent is after interdepartmental charges. Before interdepartmental charges, it's seven-point-three percent. So our current recommended budget is thirteen million, four-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, and as you can see, the most significant portion of that budget is in wages and benefits, and we previously brought before the council a request to apply for a COPS, which is a Department of Justice-funded grant. We're seeking to add four additional officers as early as January of two thousand and fifteen, and we have previously submitted that grant request, and we don't anticipate to hear back from them until September or October of this year. The city match requirement for that is twenty-five percent, so essentially, by funding one new FTE police officer in this budget, if we're successful with the grant application, we'll be able to receive funding to allow for four additional police officers next year. There's also been an adjustment to our budget for our parking enforcement staff. We have four parking enforcement officers, and at the request of finance, the, the- We have four parking enforcement officers, and at the request of finance, the wages and benefits are actually going to be changed over to the public works department because they have an enterprise fund, and the revenue that's received from the parking citations is what is used to fund those staff members. They'll still be completely managed by us and a part of our department, but the funding source for their wages and benefits is through public work, so there's a slight adjustment there. And then also, this year, we have a contracted crime analyst that's embedded through a private corporation into our department, and we anticipate that we will continue that position under those arrangements. So the cost for that position has been shifted in our 2015 budget from wages and benefits to professional services to cover those costs. And as you can see on the budget book that you have, our insurance costs have increased greatly, 26.9%, and that's a citywide increase. One of the things that we've done this year is a overall reduction in our fleet size. Our criminal investigations division has reduced the total number of vehicles that we've got, and really, we've reduced it to a point that it's caused some problems, and we need to consider increasing that in the future. We also have ongoing fleet concerns regarding our patrol vehicles that are on the road, and I've been working with the finance office to come up with some creative funding solutions for that. But you'll see that we've increased our request for vehicles by 50% for the next calendar year, but it really, over time, we need to increase that much more as we continue into the future. The crime analysis contract for this calendar year is $70,000, so we're anticipating it to potentially be close to that next year. Some of the changes that we've made recently is we've added two community service officer positions. You may have seen them. They work during... One works during morning hours, one during afternoon hours, and they share the same vehicle. It's a pickup truck, a Silverado that we have out there. And essentially, what they're doing is they're doing non-enforcement actions to support the patrol division, so basically taking some of the workload off of our patrol officers by assisting with various calls that don't require a law enforcement officer to be present. We've also improved our collaboration with animal services enforcement, and I'll just point out that they've changed their name recently from animal control to animal services and enforcement. During 2014, we've actually, with your approval, we transferred two of our vehicles to them, and they've been able to utilize them for their purposes. And we've more recently been having discussions of them expanding their service hours to start just a little bit earlier in the morning and go a little bit later into the evening so that police officers aren't used to handle some of the animal concerns, which overall is a greater efficiency for our department. I already mentioned the parking enforcement staff arrangement. Our records management system, within the last year, we've transitioned to a new records management system. That was a very large transition for us, probably similar to what the finance office and other departments in the city are going through now. That, for us, was a very successful transition, and we realized immediate efficiencies. And with those efficiencies, we have already transitioned one of our police service technicians from our records department to assist with our accreditation function, which in essence requires less sworn patrol staff to assist with that function. And then now, we are in the process of having a second PST assist our patrol function, so she's actually working down in the patrol division, assisting patrol officers with miscellaneous paperwork and other functions to, again, make their job more efficient. Last thing that I'll mention there is currently, coincidentally, this week, we're going through a crime lab accreditation process. The American Society of Crime Laboratory Accreditation has three assessors that have been evaluating our department all week. One is from the Oregon State Police, one is from the Tucson, Arizona Police Department, and one is retired from the Michigan State Police and the FBI Crime Lab. So they brought a wealth of knowledge to our department with understanding of very large-scale labs and have come to our smaller-scale lab, and we potentially will, in the end, be the first crime lab in the state of South Dakota to be accredited by this organization, which would be a very good thing for our professional development. Things on the horizon for us, I gave you all a handout that on one side has a Rapid City Police Department, Pennington County Sheriff's Office. And I just want to emphasize the, quote, "progress through cooperation." There are so many things that we do in collaboration with the sheriff's office especially, but also many other agencies, to ensure that we're delivering the most efficient level of services to the taxpayers who are paying for our services. But as you can see, we've got a repurpose of the public safety building. We currently have four floors and a basement. The top floor of the public safety building is occupied by the state's attorney's office, and this fall, they will be moving out of that over to the new Pennington County Government Building. And then about half of the second floor is occupied by the dispatch center, and they also are moving out of our building, which is going to create a lot of opportunity for increased space for both the police department and the sheriff's office. So I gave you a tentative timeline and multiple phases of what we intend to do to increase our capacity in that space, and we're in a really good position to have adequate space for many years to come with this opportunity to repurpose the building. One of the most significant areas is the current basement of the public safety building is shared by the sheriff's office and police department patrol staff, and that, for both organizations, is really the bulk of, in terms of numbers of employees, and we're really crammed in into the same space. So the sheriff's office is going to be moving up to the first floor, which will give the police department the basement in its entirety for our patrol operations. So we're looking at a significant renovation of that area, and will be... look completely different than what it looks today eventually. So for the police department's portion of the funding for that, we previously sought $100,000 from the CIP fund, and then we tentatively have $50,000 that we're seeking from the 2015 CIP, which we have general estimates at this point, and I think that that's going to be efficient or sufficient, considering that this is going to be a shared expense with the county as we move forward. Just in the FYI category, some priorities at the department. Our retention, we invest a lot in terms of professional development of new employees, especially our sworn police officers. From the time that they apply to the time that we go through our hiring process, hire them, and train them, an entire year goes by, and there is a large expense involved in that, at a minimum, $50,000, but depending on the employees and their circumstance, it could be much more than that. So it's important to us to do everything that we can to retain especially our new sworn police officers because of the huge upfront investment that's involved in getting them trained and certified as law enforcement officers. Secondly, we have a renewed focus on traffic enforcement that we... The management team is in the process of designing and anticipates full implementation by October of this year. And I've already mentioned our future fleet issues. Equipment, I just want to tell you that we do everything we can to be very creative and to share equipment with other agencies, but also to seek creative funding opportunities as much as possible. So one thing that is typically available on an annual basis is the opportunity to apply for a homeland security grant, and we collaboratively go in for that with the sheriff's office and the highway patrol. And for those of you that saw any of the media coverage on the Silver Street child hostage rescue situation, you saw the Bearcat armored vehicle that the highway patrol had on scene. Well, that is a shared resource that the highway patrol was able to secure with our cooperation in applying for that grant. Another one this current year we're seeking is what we call the JAG grant. It's the Justice Assistant Grant, and we're currently seeking funding assistance for our special response team radio improvement. Again, our special response team is one of those collaborative efforts with the sheriff's office. Tasers, we've had... We've been carrying tasers for at least four or more years now in our department, and the ones that we bought initially are starting to fail, and we need to replace, and so we're seeking replacement tasers. Our L3 is the term for our video system. So we have a very state-of-the-art, very reliable video system in all of our patrol vehicles, but we've had that for seven to eight years now, and the server components are in need of replacement, so we're seeking assistance to do that. Crime scene processing equipment, of course, we've got a very impressive lab, and their equipment at times can be very expensive, so we're looking to utilize this grant to assist with that this year also. And we haven't heard back from our application, but we believe that the results are likely to be favorable. And I just wanted to point out the key partnerships that we have. Again, this is a... This can't be understated as a huge value in terms of efficiency to the community. The Pennington County Sheriff's Office, we have many joint teams, South Dakota Highway Patrol, various federal agencies, the Rapid City Fire Department in terms of many things, but including response to emergencies and, like the Storm Atlas recently, and then many other community and social service agencies that we have partnerships with in order to serve the community more efficiently. And the last slide is on the backside of the handout that I handed out, and that just is a reminder of our core values at the department: community service and integrity. And Sheriff Tom is here to talk about the Evening Reporting Center, which is a collaborative effort to improve services to at-risk youth in our community, and then also to talk about the detox budget. And LeAnn Hollinshead is here to talk about the Emergency Services Communication Center budget request.
Thank you, Chief. We'll do a few questions with the chief first before we bring on Sheriff Tom, Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carl, I don't know if you will know the question or the answer to this, or if I'll have to ask Pauline, but do you have any idea why the insurance went up so much this year?
Well, I can tell you that at our department, we suffered severe hail damage two years in a row. I know that most of the claims that were submitted, we actually went without repairing, and most of the funds received went into the insurance account to help pay for that.
Pauline? I will add to that in that a couple of years ago, our work comp billing came to us differently than it had in the past with people that had been gone from the finance office and people that had been gone from the insurance agency for years. They were... You know, we like to use the term voodoo math when it comes to interdepartmental charges, but quite honestly, I have no idea how they came up with the numbers. And so I think it was two years ago when we got the bill and no... None of those old employees who had been involved with it, it was a true picture of what work comp costs are. I will tell you, most of their increases are in work comp. The first year, when we tried to bill it out, we weren't budgeting nearly enough, not only for police, but also fire and ambulance. It was all public safety that got hit the hardest, quite honestly. And we determined at the time that their budgets could not sustain that kind of hit, and so we chose to not transfer that money from their departments into our work comp fund because that was healthy enough. We had money to cover any claims that came in. We budgeted more the second time around, and we still got a hit. And the second time around, we took a little bit more from them, but still not all of it. So this time, God willing, I told them to take the 2014 actuals instead of basing on budgets, because that's where it was based on before, take the 2014 actuals and add the 10% for 2015. And it is a large hit. A lot of their increase is due to that, and you'll see that both for police and fire.
So we should level out in 2016?
That is, if nothing drastic happens to the calculations to the state, we should be leveled out.
Thank you, Pauline. One more question, Carl, if you don't mind. You were talking about retention just a minute ago, and we've worked hard for the last few years on trying to get starting wages up, trying to work with wages there. But I want to move over more to people that are moving into the department that already have experience. Is there any kind of a pay difference for people that are moving in, we'll say, five or 10 years of experience?
The city policy allows department directors to hire up to step D, which is a 7.5% increase from base starting wage. So our practice is to consider providing up to one step for two years of experience elsewhere if it's... But that is a commitment that's made at the hiring point from the chief of police to the involved candidate.
Okay, I was just curious. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief, for being here tonight and your presentation. This is probably easily explainable, and I think I already know the answer, but I just want to confirm with you on... In the budget on page 66, under the statistics, of course, the 2013, a lot of the numbers are dramatically or drastically lower. I'm assuming that's because we are, from previous conversations here at the dais, based on the system, the new software system, and the ability to more accurately count occurrences, because some of them are dramatically lower. I would like to think that the city's just gotten that much better, but...
Well, I can tell you that the ultimate measure of a successful police department is the lack of crime and disorder in the first place. So ideally, we do want to have reduced calls for service, but I just want to... That question's been asked previously, so I have a prepared response, and that is, in 2013, we purchased a new and improved records management system, which I mentioned. The new system is much more accurate and has greater statistical capabilities. When we began moving the data from the old system to the new system, we discovered some inaccuracies in the way calls for service were being counted. So for us, for example, if two officers responded to the same incident, the old system would count that as two calls for service. In the new system, it is only counted as one. So while it may seem like calls for service dropped last year, the numbers are actually more... A more accurate reflection of the workload performed. So when we go back to run calls for service for previous years in the new system, we actually see that calls for service are continuing to increase each year. And I actually just recently ran it for the first six months of 2014, and we are on track for 55,000 calls for service in that timeframe. So if you doubled that by year-end, we're on track for about 110,000 calls for service.
Right, very good. That's exactly what I was thinking. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll next go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carl, just a couple of questions regarding your budget. I know this is the first time you've actually had to come in and present. Is the 60,000 increase for capital outlay, is that the vehicles you were talking about?
Yes, that is for vehicles.
And just for clarification and basically confirmation, the 105 under other program, that's WAVI, correct?
That is correct. That's an increase of 5%.
Thank you. And then the other question, and I did ask Pauline, but I just wanted to confirm it with you. Moving the parking police officers over to the parking lot enterprise fund, correct? Because that's where their wages were paid out of before?
Correct, but in the past several years, it's been remedied through an increase in interdepartmental charges to cover that. So to make it more appropriate for accounting purposes, the switch is being made back to the way it used to be.
And therefore, the police department currently, as of the 2015 budget, will not, according to this, have any interdepartmental charges because the expenses and the revenue are being carried over underneath the inter- are being carried over underneath the enterprise fund?
I don't think that's correct, that we won't have any interdepartmental charges relative to parking enforcement officers, but there's other charges. No, zero? Okay. Thank you, Pauline.
And that's the only reason I was asking is because on that was different from your presentation. So it is going to be zero starting in 2015.
Okay.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate Pauline and you both working on that, because that kind of clears up one of those voodoo interdepartmental charges. So, thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Before we go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach, I'll let Pauline, Pauline's in the queue, she might have something that impacts the question of yours. So, Pauline?
Sorry, I just want to clarify. Going back to the insurance question with Carl, you'll see this with some of the departments that have buildings as well, because, and it goes back to that whole, how the insurance deductible is being changed, and we're going to try and put like a deductible fund together. So when we have to pay 0.5% of the value of the building if we get hail or wind damage again, that there's money available. The instructions to the staff on that one was actually to budget one and a half times what was charged, because we want that half to start building up the deductible fund, and it's really not, collectively, it's not a whole lot of money, but that, so there's actually an increase of 60% just in liability insurance for buildings, for those entities that do have structures. And it seems very unrealistic and very high to do a 0.5%. I will tell you, when we went out asking insurance companies for what they would do with us, they were talking 1% to 2% of the value. So the 0.5 was very lucky, unfortunately, you have to look at it that way. So that is a large part of their increase as well, too, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Pauline. We'll go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Thank you, Mr. Jaggers for showing up tonight. Chief Jaggers, I should say. I can tell you that from being a citizen in Rapid City since 1970, I think that there's not a lot of people that would argue the fact that safety and healthy and vibrant community is very important. I take this seriously when you come in here and we talk about equipment needs and those types of things for people that are risking their lives every day. And I'm not sure if you set me up tonight, but on the way here on Mount Rushmore Road, there was a tow truck on the road there and it happened. I'm like, oh, they must be towing somebody. I looked and they were actually towing a Rapid City Police Department car. They actually had it up on a tow truck and were towing it away, so I mean, the fleet service of it, I mean, I...
That was not on purpose.
I couldn't believe it when you started talking, that was one of your priorities. And I, oh my God, I think you set me up.
And we had a criminal last night that damaged another one to a point that it's not usable currently as well, so...
I can tell you, and I think I speak for all my constituents, that we are, you know, I think I mentioned to you earlier, I came back to the council for businesses that I felt were left undone, and I think one of the priorities, I think, for me being here, and I think for my constituents, is obviously safety and health of our community. I sleep well at night, I've slept well at night in Rapid City for a long time, and I want to continue that, and I want to continue to know that our police officers are getting what they need. I'm sitting here, as I sit here, and I'm telling you, I'm ready to do whatever it takes to make sure that they have what we need. And if these are priorities and it's safety is the issue, we talk about workman's comp tonight, we talk about the health issues of the police department with the gear that they wear, all these types of things are of interest and priority to me and I'm, and my constituents. So I, these conversations, I'm sure, are not over yet. We appreciate your, you know, bringing these things forward.
If I could just comment on the fleet and your support towards that, one of the concepts that I've been discussing with the finance officer and the mayor and others is that prior to the economic crisis and downturn, our fleet budget on an annual basis was in the neighborhood of $300,000, and that is really where it needs to be for a department of our size. And we did some belt tightening on our own, seeing that coming, and that was the responsible thing to do, but then as we got deeper into it, we needed to do even more belt tightening. And the consequence to that is, is we have numerous of our patrol vehicles that are well over the 100,000 mile mark, which really, for retention and morale and safety, is not a good thing. So I've asked for some help to explore the concept of utilizing CIP funds for our fleet, knowing that that's done in Sioux Falls, and I understand that it would require an ordinance adjustment here, so I believe that we'll be bringing that to your attention in the near future. The current request of $180,000 is not sufficient, but with those two concepts coming together, I think that we can really improve things relatively quickly.
I definitely appreciate that, and retention is a big deal. Anytime, even in my business, any private business, you find that the people, if they have the equipment, you can't tell someone to go out and build a house and give them a handsaw and a hammer. I mean, the tools of the trade, especially when you're talking law enforcement or ambulatory or fire department, the technology changes. Tasers are important. I mean, they seem like a run-of-the-day, everyday item that we should have. I mean, bulletproof vests, as we know from history, are very important. I think that the challenges for our council in understanding what our roles are here is to make sure that these police officers and our safety officers, the fire department, these people have the tools they need. It is a big part of retention. If you go into a job that's got all outdated, old, antiquated equipment, you're not happy. And if you're not happy, you're not going to last long. So, you know, you could talk about wages and all those things, they're all important, but there are a lot of other important factors when you talk about retention. Obviously, the training, the tools, the equipment, and, you know, the spouses and stuff, wondering if their husbands are safe when they're at work, are us and the community. And I would challenge the people on the council here, if you get an opportunity through these budget times, to give Chief Jaggers a call and ask him if you can ride along with these guys, and you're going to see what they put up with, day after day, night after night. It's absolutely incredible. The amount of calls that they get, calls for service, whatever you want to call them, they're absolutely insane, especially if you go on a payday weekend or whatever it is, and you see what goes on. And you seize what goes on when you sleep at night? I'm telling you, you might be a little bit more frightened than you were when you slept before, but I sleep fairly calmly, knowing that we have chief at the helm and we have a lot of great police officers in our police department. And I'll sleep a little bit better when I know that we got the equipment that they need. I'm not real hept on more traffic control, because I might be one of those guys that gets caught once in a while sleeping at the wheel, you know, not paying attention, but I understand the need for that, so... But with that being said, I just wanted to reiterate my support for the police department, and I think this is a number one priority for me, one of the reasons I came back to the council, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you. One last question for you, Chief Jaggers. The council approved an increase of FTEs, but I know the police department's been having a hard time getting the FTEs up to the level in which you're already allocated. Where do you stand currently with that?
As we speak, we have five openings. Four of the five are from long-term retirements. One of the five is from, like I mentioned, an officer that we trained and put a lot of resource into, and he's now working for another department in another state. So we have five openings. We have a testing process that we've been recruiting for over the last couple of months. We're going to be testing with the assistance of HR the second week in August, and we anticipate to have the selected candidates on staff by November and going to the academy and peer in November. And so I'm hopeful that we'll be fully staffed. I'm hopeful that we'll receive funding from the Department of Justice for the additional officers, so that we'll be able to hire an additional four in 2015 right away. So I believe that we potentially are in a position that we could be fully staffed.
Thank you, and thank you for all of your efforts as well. And I know that you're really, really be desperate for your fleet when you take the mayor's car.
There we go.
Yield the floor.
Thank you. Before we let Carl go, I just wanted to share something. About three weeks ago, I had an opportunity to be involved in an interview process. There were nine sergeants that applied to be interviewed for the lieutenant position, and many of you have probably seen that Lieutenant Sioux Fox was promoted to lieutenant. But, and we all sat around the table, and the candidate sat at the end, and we had canned questions, and we all asked the same question each time. The last question was, was what do you see as a major challenge for this police department, you know, in the future? And they batted 1,000, each and every one of them, retention. Our sergeant, I mean, I'll tell you what, I was impressed with the sergeants of our community, and I couldn't believe it, out of nine of them, I only knew one. I thought I'd been picked up by every police officer in this town, but, but they have a very valid concern. I mean, we're, we have young police officers, you know, and they're just, have a true valid concern about the retention of their department, and so...
If I could just share with you on that regarding retention, we have lost officers to other agencies, and really, we are very cooperative with our fellow partners in law enforcement, but there's also a competitive effort because the pool of applicants has been reduced, and so out of necessity, officers are being hired from one agency to another, and we suddenly are in a position that we are not competitive with our neighbors, including the Pennington County Sheriff's Office, the South Dakota Highway Patrol, the South Dakota Division of Criminal Investigations. I've had recent conversations with the department directors, the mayor, and with our union leadership at the Infernal Order of Police, and we're in a position that we need to respond to that quickly. We can't wait until the current contract is done, and so we've got agreement from everybody involved to go to the table, to have some discussions on how to remedy that, and I anticipate we'll be approaching the council before the end of the year with a recommendation and a request for assistance to remedy that situation.
Thank you, Chief. And while you were speaking, we have a question from Alderwoman Darla Drew.
Well, do you still conduct your cadet program? Is that still part of the work that you do?
Yes, we do. That's a volunteer program for young people to get acquainted with law enforcement.
Yeah, I'm real familiar. I use them quite a bit when I ran the heritage festival, and there's always great young people there. Are they kind of a supplier, resource for some of the people that transition into becoming officers?
We have hired several of our cadets over time to become police officers, yes.
And where does that expense lie in your budget?
It's, I don't, I don't think we fund that. They do a lot of service to the community, and they have their own account to pay for their uniforms and such, and there's no wages and benefits associated with it. So it's a self-funded volunteer organization. We have some minor expenses, but we just fold those into our normal operating budget with, in terms of equipment needs and that kind of thing.
Well, it's a great program and a good resource for the community, so thank you.
You're welcome.
We have another question from Alderman John Roberts. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one more question, Carl. What is the starting wage for a new officer?
I don't have it exactly, but it's $19.00 and something cents per hour. All the other agencies that I mentioned are in over $20.00 an hour.
It's like 1978, I believe, somewhere right in there, if I remember off the top of my head.
I can check and get that, too.
And starting for Pennington County Sheriff is 2062? Is that right? It's real close. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
I can get you exact numbers if you'd like.
If you would get me exact numbers, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I don't see any other lights. Would, pardon, would next be Sheriff Tom then?
Sheriff Tom.
Sheriff Tom, you're up, sir.
Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff, and also with me, Chief Deputy Willie Welchel and Brenda Wood, who's the director at City/County Alcohol and Drug. Brenda can answer questions that I can't answer if we get too far into the weeds when it comes to detox, so she's here for my backup. But Carl, wanted to be first to talk about the detox budget. That would be this one-page handout, I think he gave you this evening when you arrived, or when he arrived here. And we laid out the last four years and then the 2015 request, so you can see what the increase is. I think it came to, I don't remember, 2-point something percent from 14 to 15. Then underneath that, if you look at the underspent budget, in 11, 12, and 13, we did underspend our budget, and that's split 50-50. So half of it, you know, the unspent stays with the city, the other half unspent stays with the county. That's the breakout. Then below that, just kind of gives you an idea of the activity of the detox numbers. And you can see through June 30th of this year, we're kind of on a record pace, each year continues to increase. And below that's a term we use when it comes to the JL, JSE, city-county, or average daily population, or your occupancy rate if you're in the hotel business. And we're kind of in that hotel business in a different way. Safe beds is a function under detox. It's people that come in and are just looking for a place to flop for the night intoxicated. We don't give them detox services, so they don't burn a bunch of our resources unnecessarily. Took that concept from San Antonio, Texas. They have a facility called Haven for Hope. Could you go down there, Carl?
Yes.
And Chief Jaggers has been down there. Chief Allender and I went down, and it's quite the complex they have. Of course, they started out with a $62 million donation from an individual in the community, so that helped them get it off the ground. But we took that idea from them. And then if you go to the referral sources, it's broken down by the police department sheriff's office. And one qualifier, it says Rapid City Regional Hospital, and that's something we want to correct in our records, but what happens is a deputy sheriff or a police officer picks somebody up, maybe they want them checked out medically first, so they drive them to the hospital, they get checked out, and they bring them to detox. Well, currently, or historically, it's been reflected as referral from regional, but technically, it's still a referral from the police department sheriff's office. So we're going to clean those numbers up, and it'll increase the percentages of the police department sheriff's office and the other agencies listed. Then down in detox services, that just shows you, you know, what they get when we talk about detox services. And then city-county alcohol and drug programs is the umbrella division. We have four divisions at the sheriff's office. That's the umbrella under which detox sits, and just shows you other services that city/county alcohol and drug provides, and that's the Adams Street facility and over on La Crosse Street facility. So with that, it's a lot of information in a short time, and I certainly stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sheriff. First up, question comes from Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff Tom, how are you tonight?
I'm good.
Good. The one question I have is, what is your return rate at detox? How many people do you have come back once, twice, three times, five times? Do you track those numbers?
Brenda can better answer than I can. Again, Brenda Wood, she's a...
I thought Brenda might do it.
...city-county alcohol and drug for us. Some of those questions in the weeds, if she can better answer than I can.
Hey, Brenda, how are you tonight?
Good. We do have return recidivist clients. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you what those are, but, you know, there's a handful that come back over 12 times in a year.
And you track those total numbers? You know what the numbers are? If I send you an email tomorrow, you can get me that information?
Yes.
I'd just like to have it for my own personal...
Okay, sure, I can do that for you.
Thank you, Brenda, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sheriff Tom, it's good to see you with a different hat on coming in front of us this time around.
You moved the podium on me, I was confused, so...
It's good to have you here. I'm questioning the, I'm assuming this page was given to us by you. It has to do with revenue on the top of the page.
Correct.
Did that come from you?
Correct.
I'm questioning the line item, and maybe you can fill me in a little bit more on the state part of your budget, or our budgets, is level, $301,000 coming in from the state. Have you got any rationale, or they explain to us why that level stayed the same?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, the detox budget is funded three ways, you know, city-county, and then revenues we get from the state. And the state provides revenue to us in different communities, providing the detox services, and they set the rate. We don't have a lot of say in the rate. We've had a number of discussions recently about reviewing those rates. Brenda recently met with a couple of folks from the state, and they've hired somebody to come in and look at all their rates, because we use them in a variety of different services at city-county alcohol and drugs, so all those rates are under review, and hopefully we can get a bump in those.
Thank you. And the other remaining question I have for you is, I know that you're moving your, primarily you're moving your headquarters and some of your staffing positions, but my question has to do with training. Are you still doing a cooperative effort with us, the city, on training, using that facility we have there now?
We cooperate on as much of our training as possible. Well, we cooperate on as much of our training as possible. Uh, the, uh, Police Department Sheriff's Office has some common training needs, if you will. And the things that are common to us, we partner and do those jointly.
What I like in that effort is that we're doing something else jointly. And that's a benefit to the taxpayers that I can see. And so, I thank you for helping us out in that area and joining in with us and supporting that training facility that we have. Thank you. Anything else you want to add to some of the questions that we haven't answered for you or asked of you?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, just the, uh, just want to reiterate on what Carl said. We are fortunate, the relationship we have. And former Chief Hennies and former Sheriff Holloway, using their words, quoting both of them, knit the two departments together. And it does serve the citizens of this community much better than if we were fighting with each other every day. So, we're appreciative of that relationship.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Next, we have a question from Alderman Ron Wyfembak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just thought I'd take a moment too to, to thank Mr. Tom and, and Chief and, uh, Fire Chief. I, I think that when I left the council back in, uh, whenever it was, it, the emergency management services came together and, and really seen a change of the cooperation between the county and the fire department and the city moving forward. And, and you could see that when this, um, Atlas storm hit and, and any of the, just gave me a, a greater comfort feeling if, if an, uh, emergency or catastrophe happens to Rapid City, to have you guys so well-versed. I, I wish, uh, the sheriff wouldn't steal so many of our police officers or whatever. But we can take care of that later, Carl.
They poach as well.
I understand. I understand that. So, um, understanding that, you know, I don't think there's very many people in Rapid City that haven't had their lives touched in some manner, shape, way, or form with, uh, alcoholism. Uh, I think that if, there's, you know, a biggest percentage of the crimes that are created in Rapid City come from, you know, people drinking, alcoholism, those types of things. And I think Sheriff Tom, but not, not, then I'm going to ask any fa- factual questions tonight. But the amount of people that are in jail, why they're there, drugs, alcohol, those types of things. And, but I did have a factual question based on the revenues of these, uh, from the city, state, and county. Are any of these revenues driven from alcohol consumptions, like say, the BBB tax or any of that stuff? I mean, it's a direct-related function of alcohol in our community, but.
No, it is not. Like, it would come out of what we call tax support or general funds, if you will. So, it comes out of that pool of money.
Okay. So, these are all basically general fund?
That's correct.
Revenues, okay. I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate you coming tonight, Mr. Tom. And I, I think that's all I had. And I, I just wanted to add something earlier, because I wanted to add something earlier about, uh, the, the pressures that we're getting from, from the, the Bakken and the pressures that we're getting from the Wyoming forces. That we're having a lot of people that are, you know, we're getting a lot of diversity in our community, which adds a huge amount of, of pressure on our, on our police departments, our fire departments, and, and the detox. I mean, they, we're getting, uh, pressures from, you know, North Dakota with a lot of people moving from other parts of the state. They're living in Rapid City. They're starting, the, the community's going to grow from people living here, working there. So, there's, there's just a, a lot of pressure to transits that are coming through that are probably, you have noticed, there's probably more of that happening and, and those things. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, next go to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had one more question I just thought of, Sheriff Tom. How many FTEs are there at detox?
What's that?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Sheriff Tom, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. Detox, do they, are they run by a board or a, uh, do they have quarterly or monthly meetings?
Yeah, we, we have an advisory board. It's called City-County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and they meet quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yes.
You know, I, I'm, one of my duties as a councilperson is, is, was detox. And I called over there last year when I first got elected, said, "I'm supposed to be coming to your meetings." And they said, "Never heard of such a thing." Who, I don't know who I talked to. But could I, could somebody send me an email as to when the quarterly? Uh, is that appropriate, that somebody from the city council sits on those?
Yes, there is a spot designated for a city council, and we'll take care of that.
I obviously talked to the wrong person.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Thank you. Uh, I think the other portion of this presentation is, uh, dispatch. Would that be correct?
I had one other item related to, uh-
Oh, go ahead, Sheriff.
The ERC, Evening Reporting Center, and this should be the other handout you received this evening. And, uh, it's a fifteen thousand dollar request. And there's a cover letter from our steering committee. It's called our Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative, or JDAI for short. And co-chairs Don Holloway and Judge Davis signed it. But more important, I think on the second page, you see the number of, uh, partners we have in the community. And we started the JDAI concept a couple of years ago. And basically what it is, putting less kids in jail. And don't put kids there because you're mad at them, put them there because they need to be there. And as a part of JDAI, we looked at alternatives to incarceration. One of the alternatives is the Evening Reporting Center. And it was previously funded by a grant. The grant went away. And so, this year, we're asking each of the three agencies, the schools, the city and the county, to kick in fifteen thousand dollars to fund the ERC, which would be housed out at, um, JSC. So, we use the county facility. And we contract with Lutheran Social Services to run that facility, or to run that program. And what it is, it's an after-school program, you know, busy hands or happy hands. And from, when they get out of school till eight or nine at night, when kids are most likely to get in trouble, these are kids already in the system. It's a place for them to go, you know, four or five nights a week. And again, it's a diversion from going to, immediately to incarceration. So, it's a community collaborative we started. We have a lot of community partners and just asking for the city to help support the Evening Reporting Center. I think Chief Allender previously wrote a letter of support. And I believe Chief Jaggers is also on board with the request.
All right. If you don't mind, Sheriff, we have a, we have a cue here from our Finance Officer, Pauline Suppion. Pauline?
Thank you. I just want to point out that currently, they are not in the budget for the fifteen thousand. It was decided to not, um, start any new programs. So, if this is something that the council collectively wishes to discuss further, it can go in our recap.
Yeah, we, please, please, uh, put it on the recap, so at least we can revisit it. And we'll next go to Alderman, uh, John Roberts.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. And thank you again, Mr. Tom. I think this is an absolute wonderful program. I hope that this council takes the opportunity to invest this fifteen thousand dollars into this. Because, first of all, you know, like I know, if we can get to these children early enough, we'll have fewer and fewer of them in our Pennington County jail. And I've spent way too many years in there already, working, working. Let me put that out there, working. And I, uh, I think it's a wonderful idea. Any program where we can get to our kids beforehand, I support one hundred percent. So, thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, the-
Sure.
Just for information purposes, the schools in the county have already incorporated into their budget, so no pressure.
We, we have another, uh, we have another council light from Alderman Ron Wyfembak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a question on this one line item. It says underspent budget. City reimbursed, county reimbursed. Sheriff?
Mr. Chair, going back to the detox budget, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yes, yes, sir.
Yeah. The, like any budget, some years you have unspent funds because you didn't have, maybe you had salary salvage from staff leaving, or you just didn't spend as much money as you thought. So, whatever's left over, per our partnership with the city and agreement, fifty percent goes back to the city, fifty percent goes back to the, the county. Or we collected some additional revenues from a different revenue stream that allowed us to spend less of the general fund tax dollars. So, we revert those dollars back.
The, just to clarify, in twenty fourteen, we budgeted. And in twenty thirteen, we, I'm not sure if that's the budget or actual, one point one six eight. But if that's a budget or actual, I'm not sure. It doesn't tell us?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, the, the one point one six in twenty thirteen, is that actual or budget?
That should be the actual.
Okay. And then we, then we returned fifty-four of that?
That's correct.
So, really, there may be room here. Okay. Also, I haven't seen you at the gym lately, so.
My, my CrossFit membership expired, so I've been lazy.
All right.
Well, Sheriff, you're still not off the hook. We have another question from Ald- Alderman John Roberts.
I think it's time for the fire department.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, and sorry, Sheriff Tom. But, uh, did I, I get that number right? Fifty-nine FTEs at detox?
That's correct.
I have, can I ask Brenda a question real quick about that?
Yep.
If you divide that fifty-nine by your budget-
That's with the Adams Street facility. I don't know the breakup.
Oh, the, the eight hundred and some thousand dollars for it. I don't know how much Adams is. I can't remember. I saw it in the county budget recently, but, okay.
That's, that's total employees.
Oh, okay. Because I, the numbers didn't add up. I knew you didn't pay your employees twenty thousand. I was, you know, I hope you're not paying your employees twenty thousand dollars. But, okay. Thank you, Brenda. I was just curious where that was.
Total budget for city-county alcohol and drug is about four million dollars. And detox is one component of city-county alcohol and drug, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. I don't see any other council que- lights queued in. We're sure. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Um, is the next component, uh?
I'm done. Thank you.
Dispatch?
Leanne Hollenshed. I'm the Director of Emergency Services Communications. Um, technically, we fall under Pennington County, but we are a joint agency and have the privilege of serving with all of our public service agencies, the fire department, the police department, the sheriff's office, and all of the other public service agencies, including volunteer firefighters, um, Box Elder Police Department, anything that falls into that realm. Um, our budget is, um, supported by the community, um, and by you with your, um, surcharge that you pay on your, on your phone bill for nine-one-one services. You pay a dollar twenty-five a month. Um, we get about ninety cents of that to help with our budget. That covers about a third. And then, uh, we also get about a sixth of our budget from outside sources of revenue. And then the rest of the budget is supported by the city and the county from general funds. So, what we are asking for this year is different than, uh, I believe, Pauline, you said that they have the old number? Okay. The number that you should have on your budget, um, has been lowered because the, um, County Commission has directed some changes to our merit and COLA this year. So, the actual number is one million, two hundred thirty thousand, eight ninety-six, which is fifty-seven thousand dollars less than what's currently on your budget. And almost fourteen thousand dollars less than our last year's request.
Excuse me, Leanne, you said the new number is one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand?
That is correct.
Okay. I, uh, is that the totality of your presentation?
That is, yes.
Okay. We have a question from Alderman Ron Wyfembak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm having a hard time finding that in this budget book.
It's on page eighty-nine towards, towards the back here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I just, when you, when you say that's, um, that this number's, uh, lower than the other number, I don't, if I, how much lower did you say it was than what we should have?
It is fifty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred fifty. Uh, I can actually give you both numbers, because I have the old budget here.
Okay. You, you, that's fine. I just, it's, uh, subject to the interdepartmental charges. Yeah, okay. Your math. I, I can follow your math.
It is, yes. My apologies for that.
No problem.
I don't see what you see. And I know the county doesn't see what you see either, so it's, yeah.
All right. Any questions from the, uh, Ron Wyfembak?
I'm on a roll tonight, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it, but I-
That's fine.
I mean, I, I, I gotta hail to this lady, because I, if anybody's been in there and watched what they do, it's absolutely incredible. I've never seen anything like it. It's a job I would never want. I appreciate that. I really do.
We're hiring.
No. Um, I have a hard enough time just functioning on one item, not running three computers and two feet going and fingers going and eyes going and, and really being concentrated. So, we're meeting your budget needs here? Is that correct, or is there an under?
No, you are meeting the budget needs. We, we operate only with what we absolutely need. And anything that's past that kind of, I can't say that it goes back. Um, I'm sure that Pauline could explain it way better than I could, um, because it is a, a finance thing. But because we are, um, supplemented, if you will, between the county and the city, um, anything that isn't covered with the revenue that we generate comes from those two funds. So, we only take what we need.
Okay. I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate what you and all your people in there do. And if anybody hasn't had the chance to go in there and see what they do, take the opportunity to do it. You'll be completely impressed. You will not, you will be amazed, completely amazed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, th- thanks for coming down in front of us tonight and putting up with our, uh, questions. Um, in, what I'm looking at is in page eighty-nine of our budget report. Essentially, all the other items up there in the line items show up as, as a zero. And your other program support, uh, plus interdepartmental charges make that bottom line show up for us. Is that, in my understanding, you don't need to replace equipment? You don't do any insurance? You don't have any other items that we need to take a look at? Who takes care of that?
Everything is included in my budget.
Yes.
So, all of those are line items in my budget, which goes before the county. Um, and then what we do is we divide anything, um, that is not covered with outside revenues, one-third, two-thirds, for the county and the city. And so, what, the number that you get is, is simply a bottom line number that is inclusive of all of those line items.
If you don't mind, Alderman Nordstrom, I'll let Pauline.
Okay.
She's raised her hand over here.
Thank you.
Okay. Pauline?
For the clarification, we don't get anything from the county saying how they split out their costs for the month. We just send them one-twelfth of what we budget every month, and then we reconcile in the month of December. So, we actually have one object code that's called dispatch. That, that's why it's showing up under other, other program support. So, we, we never see actually how their expenses are done until it's, it's closing out at the end of the year. And to clarify, Leanna, um, said that if they don't spend the money, then we don't pay them. But in reverse, if they go over what we budget, according to the agreement, they're supposed to come to the council and discuss that with you prior to going over the budget. Um, and I think since I've been there here, it's only happened once or twice, maybe, that that's actually happened. So, um, just to, to add that to what you said.
So, just so that I'm understanding this correctly, is that the county is responsible for their equipment and insurance and everything else that we, that we normally take care of for our other agencies?
Correct. And then because, because of the way that their budget is funded with a three-way funding source, the, you know, the state or, not really the state, but all the smaller entities that use them, and then the county and us, they deduct what everyone else pays, and then it goes a third and two-thirds to the city. We don't really care how they spend that money when we send them one-twelfth every month, other than it's being used for dispatch services, obviously. But if they need equipment, instead of hiring somebody, that's their call. We aren't involved in the day-to-day operations on the accounting side of it, or, um, actually, I know there's the, the, what is it? The, um-
The Users Board.
Okay, the Users Board that oversees, sees that, uh, dispatch. But collectively, the city typically usually isn't involved.
Thank you. Yield the floor.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you for what you do. I've been up there many, many, many times. But my question is, with the move coming up here real soon, there's, is there any anticipation of any supplementals for furniture, for any expenditures due to the move, or has that, that been budgeted in?
That was budgeted for this year.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, I don't see any other council lights. Um, no, I don't. And this has been very informative. I appreciate it. And, and what I really appreciate is, is the fire department gets twelve minutes now to do their presentation, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, you're down to eleven minutes, Chief.
If it's okay, we'll just go right to my question slide.
The floor is yours, Chief.
Perfect. Well, in the interest of time, I'll be relatively quick then. Okay, Mike Multer, Fire Chief. I do have a couple of, uh, Assistant Chiefs with me this evening. If we do get into the finite details of our budget, I may refer to them in reference to, uh, either the fire department's budget in reference to the general fund or- to either the Fire Department's budget in reference to the General Fund, or our EMS or ambulance service for the enterprise, but again, we'll try to move relatively quickly here. Okay, the Rapid City Fire Department, I typically start out every presentation with this slide, which talks a little bit about who we are and what we are. Our mission statement is very, very simple. As most professional organizations, we do believe in this mission statement, it's simplified by three words, prepare, prevent, and protect. All of our employees basically live by this every day, this is how we provide our services in the community, we believe very much in these three words, and it's kind of our guiding light. And then, of course, our core values that we've all agreed to as an organization is professionalism, reliability, service, pride, integrity, loyalty. And again, no surprises there, I would envision most organizations like a fire department probably believe in similar core values. Okay, briefly, a department overview, we currently sit at one hundred and thirty-nine approved full-time employees, we operate strategically out of seven stations throughout the city. An interesting number here, this next one is our ISO rating of three, which is insurance services. This number is what rates our fire department on a scale of one to ten, and this number is what drives our insurance premiums for both residential and commercial throughout the community. We currently sit at a rating of three, which, one being the best. There is, right now, only eight percent of the fire departments in the United States have a rating of three or higher, so I think this is a testimony of both our dedication of our employees, the services that we do provide in the community, and of course, the support that we receive from our elected officials in the community. We operate the department under three divisions, one being fire operations or the fire and rescue component, and then, of course, the ambulance operations is the enterprise fund portion of the department, and then our fire and life safety, or otherwise known as our fire prevention division. We operate, or we deploy our resources with what's called an all-risk model. If you look at our counterparts in South Dakota with the Sioux Falls Fire Department, they're very much traditional in that they provide fire and rescue services for the most part, and some of those other core functions on a smaller scale. The Rapid City Fire Department is very, very diverse in our mission, we really deal with just about every possible type of emergency you can possibly think of, and you can see the bulk of those listed out there with the fire and EMS and rescue and hazmat, and we're very heavily entrenched in wildland fire here, of course, because of the Black Hills National Forest. ARF is the services we provide at the airport. Emergency management, we do have a current employee of the Fire Department serving as our Rapid City Pennington County Emergency Manager, he is also in attendance with us today. And then, risk reduction, which is all those other efforts that we do to mitigate risk in the community and try to make it a safer, safer environment. Again, continuing that department overview, we do use a couple of guiding documents within the department that have recently been produced within the last three to five years. We did some long-range planning, we hired a consultant out of New York, State of New York, to do a long-range facilities and resource deployment guide, and in that, it calls out a replacement of Station One, which you've heard referenced over the last, literally a couple of years as we tried to plan for that replacement, the downtown administrative building to move it across the street. And then, in addition to our existing seven stations, is we're in the planning phase of an additional station at Western Dakota, which is a partnership with a school out there. We've secured the land under an MOU with them, they're basically going to give us the land and allow us to build that Station Two on that facility. That station will serve the easternmost terminus of Rapid City, and also then, moving to the north and to the south as the city grows along Elk Vale and Elks Estates and that area out there, and there is a tremendous amount of growth occurring in that area as we speak. Strategic plan, like, again, any professional organization like ours, we do have a strategic plan, we're about halfway through that. And, excuse me, to back up, in addition to the facilities, we also look at our ongoing replacement of our fire apparatus. We're currently slated in the next twelve to eighteen months to purchase another ladder truck and two fire engines. Those really aren't in addition to what's already programmed into our budgets, just to let you know that we do have a pretty, a regular system to replace our large fire apparatus, those are the expensive ones, and again, those are, we have vehicles that are being purchased under a couple of line items already, so those would not be in addition to what we're currently funded at, but just more of an informational item. And then, again, staffing, a big one that you're going to hear me talk about in a later slide is additional firefighters. We, for a community our size with the call volume and the scope of our mission, are becoming woefully understaffed in terms of firefighters. And again, if you looked at regionally, for what we're doing in Rapid City for the amount of money and out of the stations we're doing, we're really getting to a breakover point where we're going to have to look at additional staffing. We've done little incremental changes in terms of a single person here for a function or an additional program, we've added an FTE, and tried to fill some administrative holes, but we're in a position similar to the Police Department spoke of last year and in previous years. There is some references to a per capita number of what we should have for firefighters and based on population and areas served, and we are starting to fall behind. In the next year, I will be doing a great deal of work to really dig down into those numbers and see just how far behind we are, and you're going to hear me talk about this this time next year in terms of additional staffing. Sorry to move ahead then, strategic planning, just some core things that we address in our strategic plan. We take everything we do in our operation with a proactive approach, we try to be out ahead of things and forecast, which is why you hear me talk a lot about planning. Community involvement, we do not just sit in fire stations in recliners and wait for the calls to go off, I wish that was the case. That may have been a little more realistic when I started twenty-four years ago, but I can tell you today, our call volumes are through the roof. We're doing about fifty percent more calls than our counterparts in Sioux Falls are. Just to give you an idea, they're nearly three times the size of Rapid City, yet our Fire Department is busier than theirs. Community involvement, like I said, we're always looking to find a way to become more involved in the community, in addition to just, again, answering calls for service. Long-range planning, like I've already referred to, we're trying to set the stage for chief officers to come, so when they stand up here and do these presentations, there's no surprise for you folks. Accreditation and standards, one of the things that we're going to be addressing here in 2015 in this budget, if awarded, is to work towards accreditation. The nine-one-one center you just heard from Leanne, the Police Department, the hospital, all public service entities in the community are already accredited, and the Fire Department is a little bit behind in that regard. And we do believe, to go back to our ISO rating, we think we have all the tools already in place and all the resources and everything we're doing today to reach accreditation for our department relatively easy, so we're going to really work towards that in the next roughly eighteen months or so. And then, of course, department excellence, there's no surprise there that we try to strive to be a leader in our industry, really around the country. Okay, capital, excuse me, capital program, just give you a brief overview of how we pay for some of our larger items. All of our ambulances are funded through the enterprise fund, that is a successful enterprise fund in that all the revenue we generate reaches a level where we can basically offset all of our expenditures. So, knock on wood, we've done that for ten years and are nearly eleven now, and we do an excellent job with, we collect all of our own fees with our existing staff within the department, we don't outsource that, and I think that's why we're successful in doing what we do, we have great staff over there, and if you owe them, or if you've ever owed them, you know that, we're going to chase you down and hunt you like a wild animal, so. Buildings and grounds is typically paid through CIP if we do asphalt repair, roof repair, additions, renovations, things like that are all funded out of CIP. We do have a line item there for government buildings. And then, new construction, our stations now have really reached a level where we've kind of basically priced ourselves out of that CIP fund in that we're going to have to go to vision funds for our newer facilities just because of the, the CIP fund just doesn't have the money to really pay for new construction like that. Large apparatus also is coming out of CIP, we fund fire engines out of that, and we do also have an additional line item in our general fund budget that we can purchase a vehicle out of as well. Currently in this year, capital outlay for fire, we're on our last year, or last year and a half of paying for our ladder truck that serves a downtown station right now. We pay some interest on a fire, or, excuse me, that's a seven-year lease purchase. Minor equipment, we have about five thousand dollars for smaller items that fall under capital outlay. And then, small vehicle replacement, we're funded for two vehicles, those are staff vehicles. We have been switching over to four-wheel-drive vehicles for the wildland deployments, the work we do around town. It used to be back in the day, we would purchase cars or four-door passenger vehicles, and if you've ever tried to put four firefighters in their gear in a Ford Escort, it doesn't work very well. Okay, 2014 approved budget, just to give you a snapshot of where we were this year, our original budget for fire was just over nine million dollars. Interestingly, the reason I put this slide in is if you see wages and benefits accounted for eighty-eight percent of this year's budget. If you tick down through capital outlay, program support, and fixed costs, leaves us for operational expenses about six hundred thousand or six point seven percent. So if you really look at the portion of our budget that we can manipulate or move things around or prioritize or use on a day-to-day basis to fund the operations, we're at about, again, six percent of the budget. So, you may look at this large budget that you're going to allocate for the Fire Department, and, you know, and I'm impressed by it every year as well when I stand here and request the money that we're requesting, but if you really drill down and you see what we have at the end of all those fixed costs that I can't really influence, we run the department on really a skeleton budget, and, you know, at any given time, we're one total, if we wreck a fire truck or blow an engine or something, it really, really impacts us hard, and we have to reprioritize and go into that six hundred thousand and start to move things around pretty drastically. So, that was the reason for that slide, is to just show you the reality of what we run the day-to-day operation on. Okay, 2015, excuse me, for the very small typo there, this is our requested budget for fire is about nine point four million, an increase of just over four hundred thousand or four point five percent. Again, if you look at wages and benefits, that accounts for about three hundred thousand of this increase. So, if, again, you go down through those fixed costs, our operational portion of that budget, that six point seven percent, is really only being increased by eighteen thousand dollars, so I believe we've presented a very fiscally responsible budget in terms of increases this year. Twenty fourteen, now switching over to the enterprise fund, tick down through basically the major categories that make up the request for the ambulance, and if you look at the increases, about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars from fourteen to fifteen. Now, interestingly enough, if you go down through wages and benefits, account for basically the entire increase. Chief Culberson has done a very, very good job going down line by line and identifying what he could do with either zero growth, you can see some that have actually been cut. One of the big ones was interdepartmental charges, so what he's proposing here, really other than wages and benefits, is a zero-growth budget, and again, it speaks to the fact that our existing staff does an excellent job of running that enterprise fund and making sure that we're not requiring any type of a supplement from the general fund, so this is really a jewel within the Fire Department, is how we run that ambulance service. I will mention the fact that there is a continual struggle between providing the absolute best service we can, quality of service, and doing it while running this type of a budget. If you think about it, when we go to somebody who's having a cardiac arrest or chest pain, or they've been involved in a car accident or something, we need to make sure we have the absolute best equipment to take care of those people, and we do that, again, with a successful enterprise fund. So, it's always a struggle between operating a for-profit business or a successful enterprise fund, yet providing the absolute best service we can. And there's this day-to-day struggle we go through every week of, you know, what's the best return on on-vestment and how we can still provide the best service, so. Request for services, just a real quick snapshot of why the department continues to grow, this is a ten-year snapshot of incidents that are occurring within the Fire Department, and you'll see going back to two thousand and four, it's just a steady incline up. On average, if you were to pencil that out over those ten years, it's about a six to seven percent increase every year in call volume. Now, this year, interestingly enough, currently today compared to this day last year, we're at about fourteen to fifteen percent over where we were this time last year. Hundreds of calls over where we were this time last year, and if you think about it, what it takes to run one of those large fire apparatus, several miles to a call for service, deal with a car accident or a fire, drive them back, if you're doing that several hundred times more, when those things are getting roughly four miles to the gallon, you know, you're wearing out an eight-hundred-dollar tire that much faster, we wear through our gear faster, disposable supplies, you name it. And I've really tried to spend some time with this, and we've tried to drill down and look for trends, and this is the best I could come up with, and I believe this is some reasoning for what we're seeing in terms of increasing call volumes. One is an aging community, baby boomers are now becoming somebody who's having chest pain and increased health issues, so they're calling for our services. Societal changes, Police Department would probably do a better job of breaking these statistics down, but there's a lot of crazy people in Rapid City, and they're doing a lot of dumb stuff, and they call for our services on a regular basis, and I will just tell you that there's more violence, there's more crime, there are more of everything, more alcohol, more drugs being used in Rapid City, and it's causing a burden on our services, and so I just tried to capture that in societal changes, and I can't speak to that, I'm sure Chief Jaggers could speak to it better. Rapid City is a regional healthcare hub, our ambulance service, under an ordinance, provides all transportation of patients within Rapid City. That being said, with regional hospital being a healthcare hub, any patients that are coming into the hospital, we typically see anybody going out of this facility to another facility, we also transport those people, so as the hospital grows and the needs for their services grow, as do ours. Population growth is no surprise, I think we're running, the last study showed, I think we've actually crested seventy thousand people, and so more people, more calls. Lack of affordable healthcare, which anybody who's in the business world and paying attention to what's going on with the federal government, you know that this is becoming more and more of an issue. With that said, people are starting to utilize other public services like ambulance service, emergency department, services that they can call upon in an emergency setting, we'll go transport them, and they may or may not pay their bill, and then it's up to us to go and chase them down through collections and all that and try to capture those fees. Environmental factors, and again, you know, Winter Storm Atlas was a big one, we had a long, cold, snowy winter, which again increases our call volumes, so those are, I think, probably a pretty good snapshot of why we're seeing an increase in our services. Expanding services and programs within the organization, we've recently started up a mobile integrated healthcare component in the Fire Department, this was funded through a grant through the John T. Vikurovich Foundation, which is really going to, I think, add an additional level of service in how we deal with our patients in the field, and what they'll do is go out and try to interact with people before they utilize services like a nine-one-one ambulance or the emergency department. We'll go out and might be just checking somebody's blood sugar or seeing if they really need to go to the hospital or really need to go to a clinic, so it's kind of a, just filling a gap. Quality management program, last year, we were able to add an additional staff to our ambulance operation, and we put a person in place to really look at quality overall and also training to keep our, all of our medical training up, and make sure that, again, we're delivering the absolute best service we can. Customer service and support, in this proposal, we currently do not have any clerical support in our fire prevention division, and any contractor or developer or anybody who is requesting plans to be reviewed or interactions with other city departments, those guys up there are out in the field about forty to fifty hours a week, and they're having to do all their own phone answering, meeting scheduling, written documents, memos, and all that, and so it's taken them away from plans, reviews, and inspections that they should be doing, so we're going to try to get them some help up there. All-risk response model, again, I talked about lack of staffing or a need for additional staffing for next year and years moving forward. One of the things that we've done to really kind of provide a Band-Aid approach is, a couple of our stations where we've got an engine sitting there that's providing fire services, will have a backup ambulance that's not staffed. So what we're doing is we're cross-staffing, so those employees that typically just respond on that fire truck can now bounce between, if there's an ambulance call in their district, they take the ambulance, if it's a fire call, they take the fire truck. Now, anybody with some common sense will realize, well, if they're on an ambulance call, what happens if a fire call comes in? And that's where we're, I wouldn't say we're rolling the dice, but we're trying to do the absolute best service we can with the limited resources, so you're going to see in the next few years me to really work on some type of a plan to increase staffing so we can fill those seats and keep up with that increase in call volume. Standards and compliance and also accreditation, I spoke to that earlier, this budget does propose an accreditation manager. The Police Department has an assigned person, that's, that person's job is standards, or complying with standards, and also complying with standards, and also meeting their accreditation needs. And then I spoke earlier about the partnership with Western Dakota. We continue to work down that planning process, and we're right now looking at securing some funds through CIP to do a conceptual design and a space analysis for that facility. So I can provide Western Dakota with a footprint of that building, and they can continue with their multiple phases of improvements to the campus. And then also, that provides me with a little bit harder number for what that station, the construction of that station would be. So as I move towards securing funds through the Vision Fund, or a bond, or whatever, I have a somewhat of a better idea what that station will cost. Survivable Space Initiative, this is a huge success. Right now, Lieutenant Weaver is probably hitting you guys monthly with different press releases. Just today, I was forwarded a nationwide publication that talks about adaptive fire communities, and Rapid City was referenced as a showpiece or a showcase community that's really doing a lot in terms of wildfire, and preparing the community for catastrophic wildfire. This budget also calls for some support with Tim Weaver. As he has moved over to dealing with our wildfire threat, it's taken him away from reviewing plans, meeting with contractors, doing inspections and the like, so the workload has ultimately increased on four other employees up there, so we're trying to fill that hole. The justification behind that is, Tim has, in the last year or so, secured over two million dollars of grants to pump into the community, to give to homeowners and property owners to mitigate the threat of wildfire on their property. And so I just think I'm doing my job by matching the resources on the city's behalf, to make sure that we can best utilize those two million dollars in grants. Station One construction, as you all know, we've secured land, we have a conceptual design, a space analysis, I've got a ballpark figure for a construction cost, and now we're sitting back watching to see what's going to happen with the funding of the new civic center expansion, to see how the funding for Station One may fall into the plan. And with that, I'm right on time. Questions?
Thank you, Chief. First off, we'll go with Alderman. Well, let's, anybody want to guess who's first? John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mike, I have a question on Western Dakota VOTEC. What do you think the timeline for that possibly coming online is?
Great question, and it really requires a little further explanation. I'm going to tell you right now, my immediate need is, in the next two to five years, is additional staffing to deal with the call volume we have today. That would be an expansion of services. Okay, so I need additional staffing to deal with what I have today.
And that's where I was going, if you give me that, let me explain where I'm going here after that.
So if we add a station at Western Dakota, that means I have to staff that facility. In comparison to Station One, if we build Station One, I already have the equipment, already have the staffing for that. Okay? So Station Two at Western Dakota is a much bigger animal, and is going to require...
And what is the staffing needs for it? Full-time to staff that, how many firefighters?
Approximately twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
And I will tell you that the timeline for that, if I had a crystal ball, I would say maybe five years out, is where we'd like to see something moving on that.
Now, here's my other question. What's the cost of training and the first year's salary for a new firefighter?
For a new firefighter and training, you're looking at ballpark figure, maybe fifty thousand dollars, that would equip them with their gear and their first-year salary.
So a hundred thousand dollars, you could put in two new firefighters in boots on the ground. The reason I'm going down there is because I know what your needs are, and we're a lot better off to start funding them now, get them trained, get them on the payroll, start putting them in on a pace of a couple of, a year, rather than five years from now, we only need ten instead of twenty-one.
And let me, let me just stop there for a second and clarify one other point. For the request, the proposal that I'm asking for right here, the request that I have before you today through the mayor's proposed budget, for 2015, I am rock solid. If you approve what I'm asking today, I'll do an outstanding job for you in providing services for the next year. All I'm trying to do is say, in 2016 and moving forward, I have some staffing needs, and I've had good conversations with both the finance officer and the mayor, and other department directors, and we know that there's going to be some big fish to fry coming up. But I just want, I don't, I'm hesitant to go down that path of, you know, I don't want anybody to question, should we be throwing staffing at the fire department this year? Because I'll tell you, I'm good this year. But I'm just trying to plant a seed, and again, it goes back to the scorecards that we're going to come forward with next year, maybe a five-year type of a planning process for budgeting and all that. So I'm really just trying to look out in the future and provide some informational items that I am going to need some staffing needs in the future, so. I just wanted to clarify, because I don't want to...
I don't want to get us into a position, though, where we go down the line, and all of a sudden, we need a whole bunch of firefighters at one time.
Yeah, and I would probably, to be completely honest with you, I would probably come in with some type of a phased approach, where we would do, you know, X number per year, and not hit, I wouldn't hit anybody with a large list of needs like that. Because I know, and that's why I'm not sitting here asking for, you know, pie in the sky today, because I'm very aware of the reality, and we're really trying to put forth a conservative proposal for you today, and so I know the reality of it, and I study the revenue, and I know the position we're in, so. I'm in a great position for fifteen, if awarded what I'm asking for, but I'm just planting seeds.
Well, bring a couple forward next year, because if I'm on this council, you'll have my support.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you. When I walked back in the room, and the ambulance stuff was on the screen, something clicked with me, and so I will apologize now, but we've probably had three or four different versions of this budget, and unfortunately, it does not look like Chief Maltevern got the latest copy. There are interdepartmental charges in the ambulance fund. It appears the differences are the last, that one, and then anything that was added for contrariwise, there's a little bit difference there as well. So the numbers in your book are the most recent and the correct, and so I apologize to everybody, but I kind of like, they have interdepartmental charges, because I know we charge them for dispatch services, so I apologize.
You're forgiven. Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. Chief, thanks for being here this evening, and I appreciate the hard work you and your staff do every day, every night, I should say as well. I have a question for you on, would there ever be a time where a citizen, say on an ambulance call? I always have citizens who ask me questions, why do we always see fire trucks go on calls that they don't need a fire truck?
Sure.
And then part of that question is, are citizens, is a citizen ever billed for a fire truck that goes on a call where the fire truck is never used?
No, we do not bill for the fire services or that fire apparatus or those personnel. The exception to that would be, we do have some state contracts that detail charges, if there's a large wildfire, we can bill for those services through the state, our hazardous materials response team, we can bill for those services, water rescue, some of those are funded through DHS or Department of Homeland Security grants, so some of those are eligible for reimbursement. But those are really infrequent events, so most of those aren't going to happen within the city. Those are regional resources, so that could be, we could go to Buffalo, South Dakota, and do a rescue, and bill that county, or whatever. So to back up to your original question, we operate what's called a tiered response, and this is a national model. Federal guidelines tell us that a fire truck has to get to your doorstep between four and five minutes, ninety percent of the time or greater. So we have more fire trucks throughout the community than we do ambulances. The ambulance standards in the nation are eight minutes or less, okay? So we can have less ambulances, because we've got more time to get to your front doorstep. So what we do is, since we already have more fire trucks than ambulances, if you happen to be in one of those districts where you're eight minutes away for an ambulance, and you're only four minutes away from a fire truck, and you've got a cardiac arrest, or somebody's choking, or a child stopped breathing, we're going to send that fire truck first, because they're going to get there in four to five minutes. And all of our staff, they're cross-trained, they can jump from an ambulance to a fire truck and back and forth. So it's a tiered response, so when somebody sees a fire truck pull up, that's because they're going to get there in about four minutes, and the ambulance will be another four minutes behind. So when the fire truck gets there, they can start all that primary care in terms of shocking somebody with an AD, or opening an airway, and doing all those things. So it's a hybrid model, it's a nationally recognized best practices model, but it's called a tiered response.
So I'm getting a question in my left ear.
Okay.
I won't name the name, but, so are they going on every call, then?
No, nope. Through our dispatch center, we have a set of protocols, if you will, of flip charts, and again, that's through their accreditation, we have a software package that goes down through every one of those medical calls, and there's a series of questions that they answer through that nine-one-one call, and it dictates what level of response it gets. A number of calls do not get a fire truck, some do. Obviously, the more serious in nature, where time is of the essence, those are going to be the ones that's going to get a lights-and-sirens response from the fire truck, and then a lights-and-sirens response from an ambulance.
Very good.
So it's, I'm telling you, it's a, it is a machine, and if you go sit and watch how a nine-one-one call is processed, and how the resources are selected for that call, and we look at the, we review those every year, and we make incremental changes all the time. A good example was, we were running somewhere about four hundred calls a year to what we would call a man-down or a prone subject. That would be somebody sleeping in the park, a tourist drives by, sees someone laying out there in the grass, pick up their phone, and they call nine-one-one. We would race over there only to find out someone sleeping under a shade tree. So we went into our protocols and said, we don't, statistically, those are losers. Those aren't patients, those are people sleeping under a tree. So we went into our dispatch center and changed that response code, and now PD just goes and checks on them versus a police car, a fire truck, and an ambulance going over there, thinking that it's an unconscious person. So we really try to find efficiencies, and try to do the best job we can with the limited resources we have.
Thank you, that's great, I appreciate that. My last question, you've talked about levels one through ten, what is it that keeps Rapid City from being a Level Two fire department?
There's a whole bunch of criteria, it'd be numbers of hydrants, the type of water system we have, which, to give kudos to Public Works, number of fire apparatus, number of staffing, our station location, response times, amount of hose we carry, amount of ladders, our fire prevention efforts. It is a snapshot of the fire department, there's, I believe there's ten categories. Everything you think of about drives our industry, they evaluate, and they give you points. So maybe we're short on staffing, but we're doing really good on equipment, and maybe we're doing really good in fire prevention efforts, so we'll gain some points in some other areas. And then at the end, you get a total, and they put you onto that one to ten scale. If we were, there was a few years back in two thousand and seven roughly, where we risked running from an oath, excuse me, from a rating of three, we were going to be a strong five, or a weak four, and that would have, all the council members' phones would have been ringing, because your insurance premiums would have been jacked up. So we went through, and at the time, Chief Shepherd came in and worked with Mayor Shaw, and they found some places to fill some holes in that criteria, and we purchased another fire apparatus and some equipment, and basically went through the assessment process again, were able to claw back some points and maintain our three.
So just a little dovetail off of that, what's, can you say off the top of your head, what's the one thing that gets us closest to Level Two in our deficiencies today? Is there one thing, or is it a multitude of things?
Like an additional station would probably get us close to a two. They're just coming out with a new rating system, and I think with the proactive approach and the risk-reduction approach that we take in our community, I think we're going to be probably moving up a little bit, whether we could get to a two or not. It gets to be that return on investment. I'm really satisfied being in the top eight percent in the country, you know what I mean? So the return on investment, if we were to try to obtain a rating of two, I don't know if we would see the return on investment. So I would tell you today that, however that might be really nice, we're really in a good place.
So speaking of that station, then, is WDT the right location for that new station we would need to make that stride towards Level Two?
It would fill a gap, yeah. We have some long response times in the eastern corridor of the city, you get out of that Elks Estates and all that. The nearest station is up near the hospital on Fairmont, or downtown, downtown station, or Station Seven, which is out by Rushmore Crossing. So there is, if you look at, what we do is kind of apply a, it's kind of a donut, or a bubble, if you will, like a bubble diagram, and every station, you have that four- to five-minute response time, so you plant that bubble on the map, and you'll see that we've got a gap between the bubbles, between three of our stations, and there's a hole out there. So Western Dakota, is it ideal within right down to the seconds? No, but I can tell you that that's a very, very good place. And I have to say that there's some efficiencies and some good stewardship of the taxpayers' dollars if we enter into a partnership with Western Dakota and stay at that site. We did look at Western, or excuse me, at the old Wally Byham site, there's some development occurring there. That land, there was a land swap that went between the airport and all that, and so our partnership really started to grow legs with Western Dakota, so we chose to back up to Western Dakota. Rapid Valley volunteers are building a new station, so that would really fill a pretty good gap for us.
Thank you, appreciate it, Chief, thank you.
Next up, we'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This report that you put out for us is a very good book to read, so if people get a chance to read it, it goes into a lot of detail about what your division does, or department, excuse me, what your department does, and I've got a few questions about your divisions, the fire prevention. Are we staffed up there in a better fashion than what we've been in the past?
Thank you, Richie. This, the proposed budget you have before you is, does account for the replacement of Tim Weaver, because he's now working on the WILAN stuff, and then also a clerical person. That would bring us in a real good place today. A couple of informational items, for next year, maybe the year after, I would probably be looking for a public educator, someone that does nothing, then goes out and trains people in fire extinguishers, and CPR, and, you know, all the safety things that you can relate to the home or the business. So what's before you today is, yes, if we were to be awarded what we're asking for today, we'd be in a good position in fire prevention, in terms of staffing.
Am I correct in saying the title is Captain Rich Broderick?
Yes.
Yeah, he is captain. I just wanted to say kudos to him, because he handled the situation over on Ash Avenue, and the people really appreciated his extra effort that he put into that mobile home park, so kudos to him.
If we could clone Rich Broderick, I'd start...
That's what I hear, yes. Very good employee for the city of Rapid City. Promotions to lieutenants, are we starting to see any preliminary or early indicators how that's working for us?
Well, we made some changes. We did take our captains out of the management pool and bring them down into the union.
Yes.
To try to alleviate some of our turnover, and we were running to a situation where our lieutenants did not want to promote to captain, because their responsibility would increase, but their pay would actually go down, because they weren't eligible for overtime. And it doesn't take a, you know, genius to figure that out, that that's kind of a loser for them. So we've made some changes with the support of council and the mayor, and human resources and that, to make some changes and bring them into the union, make them eligible, and we also changed some finite details to their job descriptions, which really are probably more in line with FLSA requirements than they were before, so.
Ah.
I think we're in a real good position, we're going to probably see a good pool of lieutenants want to promote to captain. We, in the last couple months, we've promoted three captains, Rodney, I think, three captains, and I will tell you, again, three outstanding individuals, highly qualified, and good assets to the fire department.
Your vehicle technician, are you still at one FTE?
We are at one, but we are approved for a second mechanic. We're kind of waiting towards the end of the year to see how that shakes out, and try to find, I tell you, that's a tough position to fill within the city, because it's very competitive, and...
Yeah, especially now with the competition with the Bakken Field.
Correct.
Really, appreciate that.
But I will tell you, we have an excellent fleet, and if, for most mechanics out there, they would die to work at the fire department and work on our vehicle, we have, our fleet, I should say, we have a good fleet, so. And the guys keep really good care of them, they're clean and maintained, and all that, so.
By the way, I've had the opportunity to ride backwards in the big red rig.
Yes.
Thank you. It's a very interesting experience, and then also, I've ridden sideways in the ambulance vehicles as well, so.
Belted in all the time, I'm sure.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And not texting either, at the same time, so. At the same time, so. Um, um, I, I appreciate what you're telling us about the ambulance and all the challenges that you have. I know I've dealt with an individual here just recently, and it seems to be very first class staff that's working with this individual to get the, uh, correct answers to him, so thank you for.
You bet. Thank you.
Handling that very professionally. Uh, emergency management, uh, have you been able to work out a deal with the county so that our, uh, emergency management people can get a refrigerator or the like within that?
Yeah, that was just kind of a, it was a, a, a minor detail, and we, we worked through that, and, uh, interestingly enough, Dustin Willis here tonight, he is a fire department employee that's detailed to emergency management. I cannot speak to the work that he is doing over there. He was put in a, a bit of a politically charged climate, not sure how that was going to work with a city employee working, you know, uh, kind of under the county and all that, and he has risen to the occasion. I think he's been, uh, really, really embraced by the, uh, by our counterparts in the county, the county commission. I think he does an outstanding job for the city and the county. He's bringing, uh, those two government agencies together when, in terms of emergency management. Uh, under his leadership, we went through Winter Storm Atlas, we operated out of the E O C in the basement of the courthouse, and I saw him sleeping down there on a cot for about ten days in a row, and, uh, he should be commended for his efforts. He is bringing forward this year an increase of about seven thousand, seven hundred dollars, the portion of the city that we pay for emergency management, a seven thousand dollar increase. That is, uh, what, what that is a result of is the adjustments that we made to our non-union employees recently. Dustin, being a non-union employee, that accounts for the seven thousand dollar change. That was a recommendation made by, uh, Condrin Associates that his position be, be, uh, regraded, so.
And his, and his title is?
Uh, Emergency Management Director.
Director, okay. Um, kudos Dustin, thanks, thanks for doing what you're doing over there, and, um, I'm helping you to try to get your refrigerator or the like.
The, the, the new E O C is state of the art, the county's doing a good job, they have a building committee.
Excellent.
Sitting on the, I'm actually the chair of the emergency management board, and we review the plans, Dustin comes in and talks to us about all the, the A V and technology and furnishings, and it's going to be a, a state of the art facility, and we won't need to worry about refrigerators, it'll, it's going to be really nice, and.
I just have to harass our counterparts over there at the county a little bit, yes.
Keep me out of trouble, Ritchie.
Yeah, I've caused stirring up. Uh, training, uh, uh, training with your department, can we do anything cooperatively with, such as the volunteers, the fire departments?
Yep, we do. We have a joint training facility out at Western Dakota, uh, we have a burn building that we, um, operate. We own the building, Western Dakota owns the land, uh, the county does, the county volunteer firefighters put a little bit of money in to help maintain the building and do minor upgrades, whether we need a little, little bit of concrete or gravel or whatever, they've paid for a couple of props and that. So we have a pretty robust, uh, training program that we, uh, work with the volunteers. Our stations will occasionally train with the neighboring volunteer department, and so, and we interact with them on a daily basis. This morning, there was a, a pretty significant structure fire out in the valley, and one of our engines was out there and supported Rapid Valley in their operation, and we also had an ambulance out there, so we, we have a great, great relationship and, and, uh, good agreements with our volunteers.
Thank you, and it's a great utilization of our taxpayers, uh, in a, in a much more efficient manner if we do these cooperative efforts, so thank you for doing that. Have you got a grant writer?
No, you, you want to fund one?
I'd sure like to, in the future, yes. Not, not fifteen, but yeah.
You know, to be honest with you, we, we've talked about that, at least in my tenure in the city, we've talked about the city actually hiring a grant writer and somehow tying that person's salary to the amount of grants that they're successful in, in receiving. And, uh, right now, you know, Tim Weaver does some, Chief Seals and Chief Culberson write grants for their respective divisions, and we get by, and, um, in our, uh, in our workplace, we can actually send people to these, uh, grant writing seminars and that, and they come back and they're, they're pretty well versed, so we do okay.
Thank you, and I think that's another seed that we need to plant, so.
Thank you, Chief, uh, yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. Nordstrom. Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I won't repeat my rant about public safety, but I had a question. It was one point in time when we plotted off a piece of Wally Byham for a future fire department.
Correct.
Does the city still own that piece of land, or?
No, it's all be, it's all being developed right now. There's a, a community, if you will, I think Handy, Chaffey, and, and Dream Design, and some others are out there, they're putting apartment buildings, I think maybe some shopping, uh, retail space out there, and so that whole development is being, uh, is, is actually in, under construction right now.
The piece that was plotted off, went back?
Yep, it went back, and we just moved, I think it's about six tenths of a mile to the west of that location. So we didn't, we didn't lose anything per se.
Right, I got it. Uh, talking about priorities, and, uh, I know that the city owns the, the old G D, whatever that building's called, and, and in your intention, or on your want list is a, a new fire department to move across the street, what, what dollar figure is that?
That's a, obviously, moving target, the, every day you wait, that price goes up, but, uh, I'm throwing around a figure of about fifteen million dollars for that facility right now.
Fifteen million, what kind of priority is that to you?
The highest priority for facilities.
So it's hired, hired in the W D T and everything else you've talked about?
And again, that's a turnkey deal for us, we already have the staffing and the equipment. Um, the station where it now was built forty years ago, uh, post-flood, and, uh, it was built when we had about ninety employees in the department, we now have, uh, over a hundred and forty. Uh, back then, we were doing, uh, just a couple of thousand calls a year, we're doing over fifteen thousand today. Uh, our administrative staff, we've actually had to push prevention into a basement of a, of another station, we are, uh, busting at the seams down there.
So it's fifteen million dollars, as you, I heard the number twenty million pushed around.
Well, if we were to combine the two facilities, Western Dakota and, and the Station One, we've been throwing around a twenty million dollar figure that we would fund both of those with, if we were to somehow attach that with the funding package of the Civic Center.
So in a timeframe for the main station, what timeframe do you think it would be? If it does, if this doesn't happen in, in a specific amount of time?
You bet.
What kind of detriment is that to the, the safety of our community?
Um, I'm at a critical time right now with that. We, we looked at doing an addition, we looked at doing a renovation, we looked at adding another story to it. The building can't support that, the parking lot's big enough, not big enough, excuse me, to even meet the city's requirements. Um, with setback issues off of Main Street, we can't add to the front of the building, so we are landlocked, and that was the decision back, um, really with Mayor Hanks, and then moving also forward with Mayor Quakers, that we would, uh, acquire the land across the street, and that would be the plan, that we would, we would build a station over there. And, um, timeline in a perfect world, uh, previous to the Civic Center conversations?
With disregard the Civic Center?
Okay. What I was hoping for is that in two thousand fifteen, when we start doing proposals and requests for vision fund money, that I would be awarded the money for that station, and we would begin construction in two thousand sixteen. That's been my, my vision all along, and I'm about three years into this project, and I've patiently been sitting on my hands.
I understand. Do they have a plan for the old building?
Yep, we're going to repurpose the existing facility we're in, we're trying to program some money into C I P and that, to renovate that building, and move some other city, uh, functions into there, like, uh, I believe code enforcement, C D B G, uh, Barb Garcia and some other, there's some people that are working in some closet space across the street and the, uh.
In the transit building?
Yeah, so trying to really create kind of a one-stop-shop for a number of those different, uh.
What kind of dollar amount would that be?
Purely an estimate, we're throwing around about a five hundred thousand dollar figure to renovate that building. And then we would use the garage portion for storage, for cold storage of some of our extra equipment.
Thank you, Chief.
Alderwoman Darla Drew.
Yeah, a few minutes ago, you, um, addressed a public educator, and, um, you know, I'm all about prevention, I think that's where we start, and it seems to me, uh, I might be wrong, but fires being set by children, it seemed to be on the rise. Is that, does that seem true?
In, in Rapid City, I would, I would say we do relatively well, I don't, I wouldn't say we have a fire problem. If we have a fire problem in Rapid City, it's our, it's our wildland fires, our forest fires, that half of those, uh, fires in a vegetative area are started due to natural causes like lightning and things like that. Wind will blow down a power line. Um, our youth fire setter program is, we do not see a, a great deal of, uh, or, we're not seeing an increase in those numbers. We do target specific age groups, right now, we're in the middle of a campaign to deal with that over sixty-five-year-old age group, because they'll, uh, get distracted with a phone call, leave food on the stove, and then they have a, a kitchen fire, so. I certainly respect your, uh, awareness of that.
My concern about that.
Yeah, we're doing pretty good with children. We have a, a pretty good program, we get into the schools from kindergarten all the way up to about fourth grade, so.
I saw that in, in your booklet here, and I saw that you missed five schools last year because you couldn't reschedule. I guess just a comment or suggestion, um, you know, if you do these things routinely, you could maybe film one so those schools could get that education done at a later date, and that would, um, cover you for those schools, because you could prevent, you know, one kid from doing something like that, it'd be very important.
Yeah, we, we meet with the principals, uh, when their school season starts and try to get on their calendar, and it, we're kind of at their beck and call, but that's a great, great suggestion.
I'm all about digital education, so, no, thank you for your time.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you. Chief, uh, now do we, is Dustin part of your presentation?
You know, if you want to hear from, other than the seventy-seven hundred dollar increase that's tied to, to the Condrin study and the non-union, um, unless Dustin has anything to add or offer.
No, I, we appreciate, oh, excuse me, I have a question from a men, uh, count, you in the queue? Okay, Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, uh, Chief Mike, for the, the great presentation. I would just like to make a motion to recess for ten minutes.
I'll second that.
Second, second, any opposition? Let's take a recess for ten minutes, thanks. We're back in session here, and, uh, next up is, uh, Jeff Beigler, Director of Parks and Recreation. Mr. Beigler, you have the floor.
Is this on? There, now it's on, okay. Uh, thank you very much, uh, if, uh, I'm Jeff Beigler, Parks and Rec Director, and, uh, there we go. Our management team is Lon Banduson, our Park Division Manager, and Doug Low, our Recreation Division Manager. We do have, uh, three divisions in our department, Administration, uh, the Parks Division, which encompasses the Cemetery Department, and also the Recreation Division, which encompasses the Ice Arena, the Aquatics, uh, Operation, and, uh, the golf, two golf courses, two municipal golf courses. Uh, we currently have forty-six and a half F T Es, we'll be requesting two F T Es in this, uh, budget that's before you. Uh, one of those F T positions is in the Parks, uh, unit, uh, that is a, a position that is going to be requested to accommodate all of the new areas that we've gained responsibility of, the, uh, Promenade, the Legacy Commons, uh, Landscape Medians, and Mount Rushmore Road, uh, East Can, uh, East Kansas City Street, all of those areas, as well as the new trails upon Wilderness, uh, Skyline Wilderness Area. The other F T E that we're requesting is for the Recreation Division, and that is for, um, a maintenance position for the Ice Arena and, uh, Swim Center, Swimming Pool and Swim Center. Uh, we also employ about three hundred and fifty temporary seasonal employees. We have twenty-nine parks, soon to be thirty parks, uh, as the new Willow Park will come under, uh, construction here, uh, this fall, later on this fall. Uh, we have seventeen hundred acres of parks in open space, which translates to about twenty-four acres of park space per thousand residents. And just so, uh, I could put that into some, uh, context, the national average is ten acres per thousand residents. So you can see, we've got more than twice the number of acres as the national average, which is something to be, uh, quite proud of. We also have, uh, forty miles, give or take, of paved and unpaved trails, uh, two disc golf courses, two regular golf courses, two cemeteries, an indoor ice arena, aquatic center, four outdoor pools, sixteen picnic shelters, and who knew we had twenty-five public restrooms? Somebody probably did. Five off-leash dog areas, and then we also offer a large variety of, of recreation, leisure, and, uh, enrichment programs, as well as some special events. Two thousand fourteen budget was, uh, just over seven million, the budget before you is, uh, seven point eight three-three million. Uh, the bulk of those increases are in three different areas. One is the Parks, uh, area, and, uh, that is some additional seasonal staff, uh, funds, as well as an additional F T E, as I mentioned, to take care of the new areas that, uh, will become our maintenance responsibility. Also, there's an increase in a capital line item in the Parks budget for, uh, some equipment replacement. We are going to be purchasing a, um, a new dump truck, a new pickup truck, and a, uh, a piece of equipment called a Tool Cat, which is a, it's made by Bobcat, and it's a little more versatile piece of equipment that we can use in a variety of instances, uh, snow removal and, as well as, uh, throughout the year. Uh, the other, um, area of, the other area of, uh, increase is the Horseman Pool budget, uh, that, uh, will be coming online next year, and so there is, uh, uh, quite a substantial increase in that Horseman Pool budget to accommodate all the, uh, staffing and materials to operate the pool and the pool building. And the Swim Center budget has, uh, an increase because of, uh, the new fifty-meter pool. All of the operating expenses for that, uh, new pool has been rolled into the Swim Center budget. Our capital program for fifteen, we do have funds in our, uh, C I P budget for some tennis court renovations. Uh, that is primarily some of the local tennis courts, uh, the neighborhood courts, Wilson Park, uh, Quarry Park, North Middle School. However, we have been, uh, we are aware of a need for some major renovations to the Sioux Park Tennis Complex, and, uh, we are trying to, uh, work with the school district and perhaps, uh, uh, reprioritize those funds for a larger project at the Sioux Park, uh, area. We also are in the middle of a central irrigation control upgrade. Uh, we do have money in, uh, every year of our C I P to add more locations to our, uh, irrigation control system. Uh, this is a system that allows, uh, operators at the, uh, Parks Facility to, uh, access all of the park facilities and recreational facilities that do have irrigation, and they can monitor, uh, water flow, they can, uh, detect, uh, irrigation problems, they can reduce the use of water at those sites significantly. So that's a great program, we just started it about a year or so ago, and, uh, every year we'll be adding more and more locations to this, uh, system. Uh, we did receive some funding, and we've got some funding in place for, uh, the beginning of, uh, of a new trail going east from Rapid City, uh, Mako Sika Trail, uh, which will start at Campbell Street, utilizing some of the rail corridor, and will tie into Western Dakota Tech. Uh, we also are working on our Skyline Wilderness Trails and Trailheads, and some Dinosaur Park improvements. Now, expanding access to service, uh, we are going to be, uh, providing a new facility up in the Horseman, uh, area for, uh, for all the folks up there, uh, that will be a big improvement on the old Horseman Pool, and will, uh, provide that part of town with a, a complex similar to the Parkview or the Sioux Park Pools, more of a leisure pool, uh, and it's, uh, it's going to be quite a, an improvement. More of a leisure pool, and it's going to be quite an improvement on what was up there before. We also have a number of trail projects going on, the new improvements down at Memorial Park with the Promenade and the Legacy Commons, the Parkview ASA softball complex, which is just about complete and will be open for use in the spring, the large soccer complex that's being constructed out on Elkvale Road, and we'll be beginning a Meadowbrook Golf Course bunker redesign project here shortly. This item here is a slide for you, this is an item that came up recently. Jerry Wright and I had a meeting out at the cemetery, and this was one that Jerry wanted to make sure that I brought to this group. If anyone has been out to the Mountain View or Mount Calvary cemeteries, has probably seen some of the headstones that are leaning, or really actually, some of them are misaligned, and some in kind of a precarious situation. Headstones are the responsibility, the maintenance and care of a headstone is the responsibility of the family that purchases the headstone. However, a lot of families who may be a generation removed from the decedent, or not even aware that it's their responsibility, have not been taking care of those stones. So as a consequence, we have a lot of stones that are misaligned and are in need of some attention. Jerry would like to begin a headstone realignment program out there, and what this would require would be an annual installment to our professional, professional services line item to contract the leveling and realigning of the stones. So the only reason I bring this to you is that when we discussed this, it was too late for it to be included in the actual cemetery budget, so I wanted to at least make you aware of it here. And with that, I thank you for your support, short and sweet, and I welcome any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Beigler. First question comes from Alderman Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, we were talking about increasing the budget for the Horseman Pool, you said, for 2015. Unless I missed my guess, that doesn't come online until 2016 now, is that correct?
Well, that, that, it could be correct, yes. There, the completion date was extended from June 1st to October 1st. However, we are, we did include, or did leave the budget intact as it is, in case that project comes in ahead of schedule. They're working on it right now, and if weather holds out, and they're able, they would like to finish it early, if they do finish it early, we'd like to open it early. Now, I can't, certainly can't guarantee it, but I would rather have the budget in place and not use it all than not have it in place at all.
Thank you for that clarification, thank you. Sit.
Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Beigler, thank you for being here this evening. I have a couple of questions for you. One of them, and I guess I know you're fairly new in this area, but one of my questions has to deal with the cemetery, and you brought that up. What, has it ever been talked about seriously, or passed on to you, about the reality of the city getting out of that business? Is there a market for it? Has that been, have we gone down that road?
I don't think we've gone down that road very far. I know in past positions that I've held, I've been responsible for cemeteries, all of them have been operated by the municipality where I worked, but I am aware of others that have been contracted out. And it's kind of a, it depends on what the philosophy of the community is, whether they want to have a community cemetery, or if they want to really be, hate to say it, but at the mercy of a contractor who could raise fees at any time, or could up and leave at any time. Now, that is a reality of a number of cemeteries, where a private cemetery management company has come in and has made changes and raised fees, and then have sold to other holders or have gone out of business altogether, leaving the community then to try and pick up the pieces and reestablish their control over the cemetery. So, short answer is, we have not been looking at that possibility, but it is certainly something that we could explore.
One other question, thank you. The reality, and I understand from talking to some people who were on the council before and served, but there was talk about park area in the south and the southeastern corridor, which there's a sore need for. Has that been bantered around at all? Is there any serious talk about that since you've taken the helm?
Well, I know the comprehensive plan looked into that quite a bit, and recognized the need for park facilities, not only in newly developing parts of town in the south and east, and especially in the north, but also some of the infill areas that have been underserved by parks and facilities to this point. And so, yes, we are looking at expanding our park service when there is, I guess, land available, and funds available, and kind of the need available as well. And that's something that we're very interested in doing, and whenever we are, once in a while, we're approached by someone who has a parcel of property that would like to either donate or sell to the city, and we're certainly open to those ideas.
And part of your, the reason I ask that is not only because I know it's been on the backburner for years, but when there's plans for renovations and upgrades to current parks, and there are areas of the city that aren't serviced by any park, that's the part that, you know, I'm hoping that we can start making that a priority and making it a reality, rather than just having a conversation, which is, from my understanding, has happened for a very long time before you, long before you were here, and long before I was here. So I'm hoping that we can start making that more of a reality, and that the council will make that a priority from a park situation, knowing that parts of the city absolutely have no, they have to drive a long ways to, you know, to enjoy something like that. And so I'm hoping that that will become more of a reality very soon, so, thank you.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And if I can follow up on Mr. Laurenti's suggestion of the different parks in, within the city, have you got some kind of a proposal put together yet to give us concerning a master plan for the parks in the city of Rapid City?
We have been holding off on putting together a new five-year Parks and Rec Master Plan until the completion of the comprehensive plan. Now that that is finished, we are going to be working on a new Parks and Rec Plan that can dovetail into the recommendations and suggestions in the comp plan.
Because I agree with the sentiments about the different parks and the different areas of the city, need to, such as the infill area, and one specific one that's of interest to me, and is on Ash Avenue, that's being looked at or being considered for another park. But I guess that what leads me into is, the concern that I have, is if we start into the area of developing pocket parks, how is that going to affect our maintenance line item?
Well, it will go up, certainly. You know, pocket parks are great, they're really nice to have in small areas, and people can walk to them from their homes anytime, they don't have to really drive and get in and drive. They are kind of higher maintenance to them, not in terms of the amount of maintenance, but just in the logistics involved in having to go here, there, there. However, they're a great asset to have, and a wonderful thing that a community should have.
If you could put together something along, if you get to that point in your study, could you ask the question if that, if it is feasible for a maintenance person of the Parks Department to make the rounds, so to speak, within those pocket parks, or is it better for the, better utilization of the parks to be handled by an HOA or some other entity that can handle it, such as a homeowner's group that, from that area? So if that question could be asked, I'm not particularly fond of HOAs, but that's my first thought of the person's responsibility of maintaining it, but it would be, someone has to be responsible for those pocket parks.
Well, if the pocket park is in a development, and it's owned by the development, then that does make a certain amount of sense. If it's a park that, or pocket park that the land is owned by the city, certainly I would prefer to have the city staff maintain it, so that we can maintain it up to the same standards that we use throughout the community.
Thank you. I will look forward to seeing that study completed. Does that follow under this professional services, or is that in a different line item?
It actually is something that we're going to be looking at this winter, and working on, a lot of it in-house.
Thank you. And one other question for you is, we're seeing an 11.9% increase in your budget this year, but this is still not your, in the history of the Parks Department, this is still not the largest budget, though. Am I correct in saying that?
Oh, you know, I can't be sure about that, but.
That's probably not a fair question for being kind of the newbie here, but.
I am told that that could be the case, yes.
Yeah, and just a quick example, I looked up the 2012 budget, and it was 6.8 million, so I'm wanting to see the Parks Department get back to that level, and I don't know if they're, I'm assuming that's the largest budget that we've had in the Parks Department, so hopefully we'll be able to grow the Parks Department back, so that we can better utilize, get better attendance in our parks, meaning that, I know we've got to deal with trees, fallen trees that are still around, hanging around, that are still a concern for the parks that we have, and the beautification we have, and also, thank you for, speaking of beautification, thank you for working on the, getting the beautification committee put together a little more solidly. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Alderman Ron Weifembug.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think that, on the behalf of my family and the constituents that I represent, the parks are a great asset to our community, there's no doubt about it. I grew up in the parks as a kid, spent a lot of time swinging on the swing, thinking, it's things that we take for granted, and as we reflect back on them, and we realize what significant role they play in our lives every day. My granddaughter comes from Oklahoma to see her Papa, and she, first thing she says, "Let's go to the park, Papa, let's go." So we're on our way to the park. One of the challenges, obviously, that you get, everybody wants the parks, everybody, you know, wants that service and understanding, and the budgets grow, and people got to pay. The taxes got to be increased for them, the sales tax, property tax, whatever it takes, they got to, they got to pay. In reference to them, the Horseman Pool, understanding that, you know, they're taking down the old Horseman Pool, and I sat on this council for several years, where it was told to me year after year, "This thing costs $80,000 to operate, negative." And I see that you're asking for an increase, and part of your reasoning is, is the Horseman Pool, and so if we're eighty, if we're decreasing $80,000 because we're moving that pool, and we're asking for an increase, so there's a huge swing in revenue that this pool is going to create, is there, can you tell me what that is, what that dollar amount is projected to be?
The increase in the revenue?
Well, no, I mean, I was told that, for years, that, you know, the leak in the pool, and the low level of usage of Horseman Pool was a cost to the taxpayers of about $60,000 to $80,000 a year out of the, out of the Parks and Recs budget. And now, we're looking at this going, hey, this is, we're going to get hit with another increase for the new pool?
Yeah.
And I just, so I'm wondering there, what specifically are those numbers?
Well, included in that increase are mostly staffing and utilities. Staffing a new pool like that, the new full-time FTE position, which I alluded to, the Recreation Maintenance Person would be responsible for that facility, as well as the 50-meter pool. So there's, there's an increase there. It also, it's going to take probably 10 to 12 lifeguards to staff this every day. So there's a lot of personnel costs involved in it. And then a larger pool, much more sophisticated mechanical system, so there's an increase in electricity, gas, all of that sort of thing.
Again, not to interrupt you, Jeff, but I think that we're talking about the Horseman Pool versus the 50-meter pool?
No, actually, the, what I'm talking about is the old Horseman Pool versus the new one. The old Horseman Pool was.
Oh, okay.
It's just a hole in the ground.
Where the old Horseman Pool is, is going to be the water park, right?
Yes.
Okay, I should have said water park, I guess.
Yeah.
I would assume it would be similar to what South Rapid has. So that could be a great asset to North Rapid, I think you'll get a lot more usage than they did there, so maybe that will.
Absolutely.
That'll be good. One of the things that I recall, getting introduced to the Parks Department during my previous tenure, was the usage of Black Hills Works, and the members that lived within that community there, and worked for the parks. Are they still utilizing that program, and have they, have they looked at opportunities to add to that, or?
We do still contract with Black Hills Work to do some cleaning and custodial work in our parks.
As I recall, the savings were significant. I mean, I know the solid waste and the garbage, the landfill utilizes inmates also, and they can, like, one supervisor can supervise several inmates, and I didn't know if that was something that was in the park and recs future, to use that versus all the seasonal employees. I think it's a, it's a win-win when you can get some of the inmates out that are under, you know, just need a little supervisory capacity, their low-level crimes they're in, therefore, gives them an opportunity to get out in the community, gives them a feeling of self-worth, maybe a little bit of rehabilitation for them. It seems to work great at the landfill, from my understanding, when I've used the landfill, and they've seemed to be very helpful there, and I just wondered if the Parks Department had traveled down that road, and versus, you know, having 350 seasonal employees.
Well, you know, a lot of those seasonal employees are swimming pool staff, and all that sort of thing. We haven't been looking at that as a resource for our parks. Something we could look at, yes, you know, I think in certain circumstances, they might be able to work out.
I just, I know, it seems, it's a win-win for everybody in the community, I mean, I think the taxpayers win, and I think the inmates get an opportunity to actually feel some worth while they're there, they can get out, they can get some things done. I know that, for a while, the ordinance people were using them to mow the road, and it seemed to get, they got a lot of mileage out of that project and in that process, I just thought I'd mention that, and I thank you tonight for your presentation.
Thank you. Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Richie, for bringing up pocket parks, because I didn't even think about the pocket park that I've been involved in, on the corner of Lemon and Monroe in North Rapid. And I just wanted to give everybody the opportunity, on this council, to donate to it if you want to. You can send your donations to First Interstate Bank under Build Our Park, and we will be building this park September 12th, I believe, it's a Saturday, can somebody check that date, it's either the 12th or the 13th. But anybody that would like to come help build this park, we would more than be happy to have you come help us. So thank you for plugging pocket parks, Richie, because I love them. They do a lot of good for areas like this one up in North Rapid, where this will serve us a lot of neighbors in a real close area, and it helps property values, it helps crime rates go down, it helps, you know, it's a wonderful thing, and we, as, we partnered up with the College Avenue Block Club and Neighbor Works Dakotas, and this park is being funded 100% by donations. So the city is getting a new park, yes, the city is going to take over maintenance, but the city already had maintenance, because it was a city lot, so they were already cutting the grass up there. And this was a park 30-plus years ago that went into decay, or whatever you may want to call it up there. And I'm just very happy to be involved in this project for the last year and a half, it gave me, it gave me something to do in my free time. So, anyway, I just want to, anybody that wants to know more about it can contact me or Jeff, and he can put them in contact with me or Neighbor Works, so thank you very much.
Alderwoman Darla Drew.
I'm going to put a pocket park in my backyard, and I would like some maintenance with that, so, anyway, just saying.
Send checks. Send checks.
No, I'd like to commend Jeff on tackling the redesign of Dinosaur Park. You know, I've had some comments on it, they don't want to see the, the beauty, the history of the park, you know, taken away in any way. But if you've ever tried to take a person up there with any kind of disability, they can't, you know, there's no way they can enjoy that park. So, thank you for looking at it and making this historic and significant part of Rapid City more accessible. I think that'll be a great addition to our city. Thank you. Oh, and one more thing, how much is it gonna cost, you know?
The dinosaur park?
Yeah. Yeah, I do, I do read my stuff, but he's here right now.
The, the, the accessible pathway, all the way up to the, to the top, as well as the improvements underneath the existing dinosaurs, all of that sort of thing, we're looking at around a million dollars.
Okay.
Now, there are some additional areas that will be defined for some other interactive playpods or some other sorts of, of elements that will be areas that could be used for fundraising efforts or sponsorships and things like that. But our, our main goal is to provide the universal access up to the very top of the hill.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Jeff. I don't see any other council lights. Thank you very much. You were in the queue, you're out, Jeff. Nevermind. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for your support.
Mr. Waltersdorf, are you awake? Our next presenter is Terry Waltersdorf, Director of Public Works. Mr. Waltersdorf, you have the, you have the floor. And I just might, if we could, just as a comment, if we could keep our questions directly related, if possible, to the budget as presented. Thanks.
Thank you, and good evening. It's been a busy night for me. I actually just came back in from our open house town hall meeting out of Big Sky that we had tonight. So, we had a good turnout, over 100 residents out there to discuss the potential annexation and street improvements. So, a lot of questions and some, some good debate back and forth tonight. Public Works Department is comprised of several divisions, wide-ranging in the duties that we perform. They include the Engineering Division, Rapid Transit Division, Streets, Water Division, Water Reclamation Division, and the Solid Waste Division. Regarding our, our Engineering Division here, the Engineering Division includes the following cost centers. Engineering Administration, essentially, that's the engineering staff that's housed up here on the second floor. It also includes the inspection staff that goes out and inspects the construction projects. Our Traffic Engineering Group, that's the group that is responsible for maintenance of all the traffic signals throughout town, the lane striping contracts, all the signage replacements, traffic studies, those are all done by our Traffic Engineering Group. The Street Lighting is a different cost center, that's for all of the illumination of our city streets throughout the community. And then, our Erosion Sediment Control Section. The 2015 operating budget increased approximately 2.4% above 2014. Very, really, not a lot of notable changes in this particular budget. We do have two replacement vehicles. Typically, on an annual basis, we'll replace one to two vehicles in the Engineering Division. Rapid Transit, this includes a couple of cost centers, the actual Rapid Transit System, that's the actual buses and the employees, both on the fixed route and the dial-a-ride system. And then, of course, the Transportation Center, that's the Milo Barber Building and the, the bus barn over on, over by our Street Division. This budget increased approximately 14, 14.6% above 2014. Keep in mind, the main reason for that increase is because of the equipment purchases that will be occurring next year. We are replacing two fixed route buses, they are extremely expensive buses. We are increasing one FTE that's in the budget here. We plan on doing the mechanical, basically, the day-to-day oil changes, brake replacements, the work that we currently, right now, send out to dealerships. We want to do those in-house, we know we can do it cheaper and more economically. So, actually, even though we're adding one FTE, that is not really an increase to the operating cost, because we are gonna be able to reduce our repair line item that we would normally pay out to those, those companies. One other thing that the Rapid Transit Division oversees is the, the maintenance of the parking lot and area budget. We have six leased parking lots and, of course, the parking ramp structure. 2015 operating budget has increased approximately 4.8%. And we are doing true cost estimates for the anticipated repair and maintenance of those parks. So, we do set money aside every year for the upkeep on those. Our Streets Division is made up of several cost centers, the Streets and Highways, Snow Removal, Equipment Maintenance, and Street Cleaning. Again, the Streets and Highways, those are, that's the pothole repair crews and the concrete panel replacement crews. The Snow Removal is, just as it says, the, all the snow removal equipment budget, the sanding material, de-icing agents that we purchase for the winter season. Equipment Maintenance is our, is our shop down there, that includes all the mechanics, and that is essentially interdepartmental charges, really reimburse and pay for most of that expense down there. And then, the Street Cleaning, that's the sweeping operations that occur really year-round. If it's, if it's warm enough and not snowing in the wintertime, we're usually picking up the sand that we just placed down the day before. The operating budget in the Streets Division increased 11.3%. Some notable items to include, that are included there, the replacement of three pickups and one shop service vehicle, replacement of one loader, a grader, an end dump, one sweeper, one flusher truck, and two skid steer loaders. And we also increased, it's commonly referred to as the STCM line item, that's the Streets Contract Maintenance, that's where we do our concrete panel repair projects out of. We increased that line item by 5.2%. The overall 11.2% essentially is equipment purchases, that's, that's what's taken up the, the brunt of that increase. Our Water Division includes the General Administration Cost Center, water billing, water production. That's basically the, the operators that operate the water treatment plant and the well sites. And then, Water Distribution, that is our crews that go out and maintain the piping throughout the community. And then, we have multiple capital improvement funds within the Water Division, both replacement funds, expansion funds. We set funds aside for replacement of the, the new filters that we just installed in Jackson Springs, so when they come due for replacement down the road, we have money set aside and we're not scrambling for money. The overall operating budget increased 4.5% above 2014. We are replacing some equipment, a dump truck and a pickup. And there's, as I mentioned a little bit ago here, the tenure replacement program for the membranes at Jackson Springs. And of course, we continue our five-year capital improvement plan, which does include some funding out of the Utility Support Fund Bond Projects. Water Reclamation Division, this group did see some major changes, starting in 2014, with the addition of the Stormwater Utility. We did wrap that utility into the overall oversight of the Water Reclamation Division. So, cost centers that, that is included in this budget include the, the Water Reclamation Lab Pretreatment Group, the Reclamation Treatment Facility itself, the Water Reclamation Collection, otherwise known as the Utility Maintenance Group. Those are, that's the group that's responsible for maintenance of all the sewer pipelines throughout the community. Our Septic System Inspection Program, Stormwater Drainage Operations, the Utility Maintenance portion of it, and then, again, multiple capital improvement projects for various things related to both wastewater and stormwater activities. The operating budget for just the wastewater site increased approximately 4.4% above 2014. We are requesting the addition of one FTE that would be added to the Lab Pretreatment Group. A few years ago, we reduced the number of FTEs in our, in our, our lab supervisor out there took over some of those duties, but with some of the growth we've seen in the pretreatment side of things and just the testing requirements out there, we believe it's time to, to add that FTE position back in. We're gonna replace a jet vac machine that, those go for, usually, to the tune of around $400,000, so that's an expensive piece of equipment. And again, we will continue our five-year capital improvement plan, which, again, includes several Utility Support Fund Bond Projects. Solid Waste Division includes both the Solid Waste Collection Cost Center, that's the trucks that drive around throughout the community and pick up the garbage at your curbside, our Material Recovery Facility, and the Landfill Disposal Facility. And, and we also have several capital improvement fund items in that, in that Solid Waste Division. Those capital improvements include things like methane gas extraction projects, final cover projects, new cell expansion projects. The overall operating budget out there decreased 5.5% below 2014, essentially due to the equipment and capital projects, you know, just fewer projects going on, on out there in 2014. We are gonna continue to permit and do grading operations for the new Johnson property, which we purchased several years ago to the south of the existing landfill, and that'll allow for, for additional growth. We'll, we'll have in excess of 50 years of landfill life out there once that Johnson property is permitted. We'll continue the landfill gas collection and sales 13 and 14, and we have some additional equipment we're purchasing, including roll-off trucks, yard waste packer trucks, some loaders and other miscellaneous equipment. And with that, I will stand for any questions you have.
We have no questions. Terry, thank you.
Thanks.
No, no, seriously, does anybody have any, oh, Alderman? Alderman Wyfembuck.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate your leniency towards all my questions. I try to get myself back up to speed in a lot of areas, and I know that probably every council person up here, probably at one time politicked about potholes and roads and all that stuff, but yet, you never see him ever get caught up, so I don't know if our constituents are ever gonna continue to believe us, but I appreciate your presentation tonight. I, I had a question on equipment purchases that you were making, that I think those were outright equipment purchases? Is that what was due, some of the increases?
Yeah, and keep in mind that, that the equipment purchases we'll be doing on it as a loan, we're not, we don't, we're not allocating enough funds to purchase them outright, so there will be loans associated with those equipment purchases. Well, for the bigger, heavy pieces of equipment, the pickups and smaller, like, skid steer loaders, we'll purchase those with cash.
Okay. The other question I had is, at one time, a piece of the Wally Biond property was purchased through the Water Department's funds, and I note recently that, that property has been transferred to the airport, and significantly, I think that they were trying to market that property, I'm not even sure of the number anymore, maybe a million, $2 million, and they traded it across to the city from the Water Department. Do the city, and I just wanted to follow up on the, the funds ever got back into the Water Department itself, or is there a provision? I think I heard rumblings that there was a provision to, to get that accomplished at some point.
You're correct, we did trade the property. The Wally Biond property was traded for property owned by Hanny Shaffey out by the airport, and Pauline can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe technically, that would still be part of the inventory of the Water Division at this point. So, we are, we are the proud owners of property out by the airport now, and, and at some point, if that were developed for industrial purposes or anything like that, I would hope that proceeds from the sales would, would reimburse the Water Division for the, the money that they laid out.
So, there's been no real...
Not at this point.
The other question I have for you is that, I know that there's some bigger areas in California and Wisconsin, and some areas that have gone to a truck, a utility truck that will rip up the street, grind it up, repurpose that product and lay it back down all in one motion. And I understand from our streets, you know, they're, you know, when you get into a, a position where you can, they need to be resurfaced or whatever, this isn't a, is this, have you ever seen that operator? Is it something that Rapid City should look at? I think the price of the truck at the time was like a couple million bucks or something.
I'm sure the piece of equipment like that would be very expensive. I personally haven't seen one like that operate, I don't, I don't know if I've ever seen one operating in the, in this area like that. But here's what I'd say, a lot of, our, what I would call our rehab projects, where we go in and do some, maybe some edge milling and just do an overlay or some chip sealing on roads, those are pretty easy to do. But once, usually, anytime we go in and totally tear out the asphalt, and we're doing curb and gutter repair, that type of thing, usually, when we get to that level of repair on the street itself, we also want to repair the utilities, so...
But I understand that, not to interrupt, but I'm just saying, on a, on a maintenance style basis, I mean, there's, there's, you know, and I know in, in East Ohio Street, which is a street that's been long overdue, been on and off the CIP list for several years, and it needs a total reconstruction. I understand the difference, they gotta dig the street up. But I'm talking an over basic street that's just wore out. And it's just something I wondered if you'd ever seen operate or ever had any interest in looking at it, or if we've ever, as a city, looked into it. It, it's something that two people can operate, basically, or maybe three or, you know, and the city employees can be trained to operate, but it can save millions of dollars in street repair over, you know, as they, you know, they progress, sometimes they need chip seals, and then they, there's different levels, obviously, of street repair, but that's fine, we can further that conversation.
Yeah, I, I think we're always willing to take a look at, at different ways of doing rehabilitation on streets, and we're always willing to take a look at whether it's more cost-effective to do it with city crews. I know the last time we, we took a look at, you know, is it more cost-effective to chip seal streets with city crews or do some overlays? Based on the bid results we've been seeing in recent years, it's still more cost-effective to hire that work out as opposed to staffing up and having the staff we need on, onboard to do the work, but we're always willing to re-review that.
The other question I had is, when they, they talk about basic water, street sewer reconstructions, and you're talking about, one of the things that the, the contractors bid those projects out, but engineers never bid them out, they, there's, I mean, it seems like there'd be inherent cost savings, I mean, for basic street water repairs that they would bid those items out. But maybe that's not related to the budget tonight, or...
I guess I...
Foundation, I'm just laying the foundation for a conversation that I'm gonna probably bring forward, so...
Okay.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Richie Nurdstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will try to keep it down to one question, but I, he hasn't limited me on how much of my comment time I can make. No, I'm kidding.
Richie.
I'm kidding. Terry, I guess my heart's still back at the Water Reclamation Facility and, and issues that we're dealing with out there. Have you got a long-range plan of, I call it the casualty list, that we have, seem to be going on all the time out there? Have we, we got something along the line of a projected plan for what we need to do for upgrading and modernization of the plant and facility?
Yes, we do. We're actually looking at, I believe, close to $12 million of plant improvements out there, that, to be quite frank, won't really give us much expansion capability, but it will bring our, our plant into compliance so that we don't see discharge violations like we've had over the last couple of years. And we've been kind of whittling, whittling away at it, piece by piece, whether it would be the rotator arm replacement, some pump replacement, LG control, we just awarded the project for the upgrade to the UV lamps out there. So, it's, we are, we are systematically going through that plant and, and, like I said, whittling away at it, one section at a time. We have, we are applying for some SRF loans through the state, so it's a sizable project for us.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor. Thank you, Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Terry, for your presentation. If nobody else would mind, I'd like to offer up a motion that we continue the mayor's presentation until the August 11th meeting.
Huh?
Well, depending on the line of questioning, Mayor, you may get questions related to 2020, so...
How about if, if, if you allow, let's finish out tonight with the mayor's sentence on the agenda, and we'll, I don't see any other council lights for, for, for Mr. Waltersdorf.
Okay, 30 seconds, Mayor.
Terry, thank you very much for your report.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Well, good evening. Pleased to report that this is the last presentation of the evening. It's also the, the least interesting and the least expensive. All right. Just an overview. This cost center includes the mayor, 10 city council members, two full-time administrative support staff for the mayor and city council, which is Mike, Michael Howard and Lindsay Seacrest, and then also proposing a halftime FTE for next year. And it's important to know, we've had, we've had two and a half people, so to speak, in the mayor's office for a long time. Several years ago, we changed it up a little bit and reduced the amount that was in the overall salaries line item that was paying for a temp and then created our, created a temp line item. What we're proposing now is to reduce the temporary wages by $16,000 in its entirety, down to zero, and then increase, add in $20,102 for a halftime FTE. And that's a, a total net increase for that halftime FTE of about $3,900 is what that would cost. 2015 operating budget, it's important to, I'll look at the last two, starting, to increase transparency, starting in 2014, the operating budget reflects council contingency funds. Before it didn't. So you have $150,000 in 2014 for council contingency and proposing $100,000 in 2015 for council contingency. And I'd like to show the history here of council contingency. And this is where the council may want to have policy, a debate or discussion in the, in the recap. Let me see here. All right. So this is our balance for 2014. And if you look at, in the past, we've been pretty modest. We had the, aside from the $53,000 for Performing Arts last year, if you add the rest, it was only about $25,000 that we, that we spent out of council contingency. So our finance officer recommended that we, to help balance the budget, that we take it to 100 and, or just to an even $100,000. And the council may want to have some discussion on that. You certainly, based on past history, you could go even lower than that if there's some other things that you would like to fund in the, in the budget. So that pretty much covers that. By the way, there's a, a great story there, if you're ever interested. I'll tell you about that sometime. So... All right. So that covers council contingency. And this information is also linked to the council agenda. Okay. The 2014 approved budget for mayor council was $789,000 and change. Proposal for 2015 is $769,322. There's three things to note. Two of that I already mentioned. One is we eliminated temporary wages completely. $16,000 have been removed. We've added a halftime FTE, estimated cost of $20,102. And we reduced other operational items by about $4,700. Also included in the budget is a slight increase for approved wage increases, along with a proposed increase for mayor and council salaries affected, effective July 1 of 2015. It's important to know that that requires a separate resolution of the, of the city council. Just to get a little bit of history on it, back in 2007, there was a resolution at the time that had been passed to provide for automatic 3% increases for the mayor and city council every year. That was met with, with some controversy. And as a result of that, that debate and the subsequent mayoral veto, the, there was a new resolution that came forward that required, that required a two-step process. One is for wage increase to be approved for the mayor and city council. It would need to be included in the annual appropriations budget. And prior to actually passing or adopting the wage increase, there would need to be a resolution by the council. So if the council chooses to accept this wage increase, there would, it would be effective July 1 per the resolution that would ultimately come forward. If you pass the budget as it is now, and the resolution doesn't come forward or the resolution fails, then wages for mayor and council would stay as they are now. Right now, the wages for mayor and city council are at approximately 2008 levels, since there was a decrease in 2011. So a one and a half percent increase has been included for next year, 3% starting July 1, which would be after the next round of city elections. And I want to show something here to help put this in, in context. And then I'm almost done. I'll provide, we'll provide a, provide a copy of this and link it also. So I apologize. It's going to be kind of hard to, hard to read. So if you... If you look here at 2010 salary and wages, that is the salary and wages for 10 city council members, the mayor, and two and a half staff. That's $380,000, $380,062. You fast forward to 2015, the total for, for mayor, city council members, and a half FTE to replace the temp wages, and the implementation of contri, which affects the, both the halftime FTE and Michael and Lindsay's positions. The new total is $374,297. So again, $374,297 compared to $380,062 for five budget cycles prior. So that helps put it in context. So again, we have for wages and benefits, and then you add the operating budget, which I covered previously. And remember, if you look, remember the previous slide was $323,900. That's $223,900 for operating budget plus $100,000 in council contingency. Miscellaneous items is, we used to have a system of, of random memory and sticky notes and Microsoft Outlook reminders in order to follow up with constituent issues and council member concerns. And I'm pleased to report that I believe we're doing much better than we were several years ago in terms of following up and resolving issues, both issues that our constituents bring to us directly to my office and issues that come through you. And I want to thank you for your patience in working through that process. We have a much more professional process, and it's much, much more efficient than it was a few years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not see any council lights. Anybody have any questions for the mayor on his budget? Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll reserve my questions until August 11th. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Before we adjourn, if we could, just so we wrap up, on August 11th, Pauline, if I understand, the community investment people will be here. They are not to give presentations, but to be here in case we have questions. Anything else you want to tell us what's going on on the 11th?
Although Joel will go first with the city attorney's budget. And then we'll have the community investments. We have two hours set aside. They're, they are listed out on the agenda. So you would typically go through in that order. I do know that these are the major ones that we give directly. We had asked for financial information, and one of the, the groups, the Allied Arts, they're just a flow-through. So, and really, they keep about $2,000 of our money for their operations to administer that on our behalf. And so, you know, I asked for some more information, but I told them that we don't need the information on the individual groups because that is a decision that we give them to make. So I just kind of want to give you the heads up on that.
Did you get, were you able to get the other information on any of the other groups?
I'm not sure who has sent what. They're supposed to be getting the financial information to Charlene in time to attach to the agenda for the 11th. So you guys have time to look at it before that night.
That's what I was wondering. So we all have a little bit of time to look at it.
Hopefully, everybody will follow through with the request.
All right. Now, entertain a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Thank you.